Good evening, everyone. This is the City of Southfield Committee of the Whole Regular Meeting, being held on June 7th at 6:00 PM via WebEx. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Banks. Brightwell?
Here.
Hoskins?
Here.
Mandelbaum? Frazier?
Here.
Taylor?
Here.
Cruz?
Present.
Madam President, you do have a quorum of excuse. President Protem, Ari Mandelbaum?
Thank you.
Present.
Hi, Ari. Our first item is the presentation by our State Representative Kyra Harris Bolden. Is she on the line?
It does not appear that she's on the line at this present time.
Okay, we can come back to her. The very next item is the creation of the Deputy Director of Diversity, Equity and Inclusion and the Training Position.
Good evening, Madam President. It's James Meadows from Human Resources.
Hi, James.
Hi, Madam President. Madam President, we've talked about this item, I believe, two times with the Council. And we're requesting the position of Deputy Director of Diversity, Equity and Inclusion, or DEI, in training. The successful appointee would be responsible for development and implementation of diversity management practices, policies and structures needed to support and manage diversity effectively. This appointment would also be responsible for development and implementation of a structured organizational training program aimed at enhancing skills of our employees. We recommend that the position be placed at Management Group O with a salary range of $74,603 to $100,930. If approved by the Council, then we'd ask it to be placed on the next consent agenda.
Okay. I will open it up to the Council for questions unless... Fred, did you want to add anything else to what was already said? Fred?
Yes.
Did you have any other comments or want to add anything to what James has already said?
Uh, no.
Okay.
Madam President, we have two Freds on the line. So Mr. Nager actually responded.
Yeah.
And it needs to actually be, I think you were asking our city administrator?
Oh.
It's just a little confusing.
I apologize. Fred Zorn, our city administrator, did you want to add anything to what James has already stated? Okay, well, hearing nothing, I will go to the Council. I'll start with you, Ms. Banks.
Thank you. Um, I guess to Mr. Meadows, how did we come up with this, um, management group, grade O pay range? Didn't we have an outside group that was going to make some recommendations as far as, um, pay ranges for, um, different positions? Did we go through them?
No, Councilwoman. And so let's talk about the compensation and classification study. That study is being done as we speak. We've given them our initial information. I do not expect that study, or at least the draft of that study, to be done until September, late September range.
Um, when? Didn't we hire this group in, um, late 1999 or early 2000?
Which? Are we talking about?
The study group?
No, that was a different group. They, the group we hired, um, 20 years ago approximately, um, they were doing the Haze Study method. This group is not using that.
Okay, but this present group, didn't we hire them, um, like almost two years ago?
No, we did not. We have talked to the Council about it. We've worked on it. Uh, it probably has been approximately two years. When I, when I was hired approximately two years ago, one of the first things I did was recommend that we do a class and comp study for the city because one hadn't been done for at least 20 years.
Right, and the reason I'm asking is because that's when I was elected onto Council. And I know we've been talking about this compensation and classification study, and I'm just a little surprised it's taken as long as it has. And, um, I don't know if we should wait to see what their recommendation is. I don't know if this position is too low, too high. You know, I don't even know how we came up with the range that... Can you explain how you came up with the salary range that you dug?
We look at the market, um, compo positions in the market.
Okay, are there any communities, um, in the area that have a position like this?
There's a range of communities in the area that have a position like this. I don't have the list with me, but that's where we got the information in terms of building the job description, uh, looking at pay, looking at the functions. If you look at places like Wayne State, they have multiple positions like this. They might have one for the law school, they might have one for the medical school, they have one for the school itself. Just depends on what environment you're in.
And I guess I was just thinking more of governments right now. And I, I remember at one time, and, um, just refresh my memory, please, we talked about contracting this position out versus actually hiring a person. And why did we change our thought on that again?
So if I remember the conversation, there were two conversations relative to that. There was one to hire a consultant to do an initial assessment. Also, I had made a number of recommendations as a range to look at. In other words, when I do recommendations like this, one is might be hire a consultant. This is what the cost and this is the returns. Hire internal, um, hire a position like this and a staff. I believe those were the three areas that I pointed out or three recommendations I made.
Okay. But with, um, the creation of this position, we're not going to hire additional staff to assist this person. Are that, are we, I mean, are, are members of your, um, team and your department going to help and assist?
Yes, and that's one of the reasons why I landed on this recommendation because most of the work that would be needed to assist this position will come out of the HR. Some of the work will come from city employees and other people that we will pull in. In other words, if you need an expert in certain areas, that might be from building. If you need an expert for Hispanic, that might come from a different place. Most of the work in terms of building projects, doing work, will come from the HR functions.
Okay, thank you. I have no further questions.
Okay, thank you. Um, next we have, um, Mr. Brightwell?
Yes, I have no problem with the position, but in the write-up, it indicated that specifically it would report to James Meadows, HR, blah, blah, blah. And shouldn't we just be, um, shouldn't we just say it would report to the HR director? What happens if Mr. Meadows is not here? So shouldn't we just clean the paperwork up and say that this position will report to the HR director? It says it on the second page, but on the first page, I think, I don't have it here, but I think in the second paragraph, perhaps the first paragraph.
Well, I see it on the job description itself. It says reports to the HR director, but if you want to see that on all of the places that we refer to, I'm sure that can happen.
Yes, I would like to see it. Maybe we'll just clean it up. On the info that we have, it uses Mr. Meadows' name specifically.
Okay. Yep, we can take care of that.
We'll make that change.
Okay, otherwise, I have no idea.
Thank you. Mr. Cruz?
I'm just very pleased to see this moving forward. Um, I think there's a, there's a lot of gaps that this can fill within the organization in helping bring solidarity with everyone, training in the area and also maybe in the community too. One thing I was just going to ask you, James, is this person going to be doing, um, responsible for assessment and outcomes and such? Or would they be given the leeway to bring someone in to do that type of work? Because, well, you know, we work off anecdotal information so often. Would this person be doing that as well?
So just like everything else in HR, um, it's driven by the need. If we need a specific study done or a specific item researched, if you can't find it out there, you might have to buy it. And that's going to be a conversation.
Okay.
That's another reason why it's housed in our department. It'll be pulling from our budget.
Yep. Yeah, and not that to think the, uh, the salary is reasonable. In fact, I thought it was a little low, but I mean, I guess if we're doing averages, you know, that makes sense. But, uh, I mean, but I think it's an appropriate salary range myself based on positions I've seen. I know, I'm speaking more higher head than municipalities in this regard, but, uh, so, but nonetheless, I'm full support. I hope we can go ahead and get this passed, move forward. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Councilman Frazier?
Said that you've talked about this a couple of times, so whatever conversation went on is not, you know, is lost to me. So I guess I'm going to ask some questions that you may have already resolved before I got here. And one of them is, uh, what was the need to have this person, uh, on the payroll? Or, uh, consultant or whoever? What was the need?
One of, if I may, one of the biggest things that I find in the workplace environment these days is the change. As we bring in new people to HR, they're, the things that would make this a good employer is different than the people who are retiring. Diversity for me is not, um, what people think of as just black and white. Diversity is everything from age to skill level, from community background. We are in a fight for positions and employees, finding firemen, finding police officers. You need someone who can reach out to those areas and help build the community that would draw in folks who want to be here. It's not going to just be the money. You're going to have to understand what they're looking for and what holds them here. This is a radical different workforce that's coming in than the one 20 years ago or 30 years ago when I started. That's one of the major things this does, is look out in the community and help find what those diverse factors are and draw them into us. Then it also helps train the staff so they'll function better, so they'll understand better why this is important to one part of the staff or someone's different background. We are just not hitting those things now. Those are some of the key things that managers, supervisors and employees need to hear and understand.
And you say if you're not hitting those things now, what is the indication that you're getting that we're not hitting those things? What, what are the manifestations that you say, "I have to go and have this person, uh, to make things better"?
A number of things. One, a director on the line today interviewed and was ready to make an offer to an employee, excuse me, to an applicant. The applicant never responded. I said to the director, "That person ghosts us." It took a while for them to understand how someone who's 22 looks at hiring processes now versus someone who's 42 or 52. Again, we are in a fight for a number of different people, where this police and fire especially, who are not responding in the normal, the normal systems that we've been using. That's one of the reasons why we're changing HR, how we do hiring. We're putting in new systems so we can do more online hiring. It's just not 30 years ago. You really need to understand these people and help them come in and grow with you.
You know, it's, it's been my understanding that, especially with police and fire, that, uh, the major reason that people aren't being hired is they can't pass the drug test. Uh, is, am I wrong or is that something I just think I heard?
You may have heard that, Councilman. I am not disagreeing that you didn't hear that, but that is not the reason why we are not finding people. When I was in automotive, that was a big reason, uh, because of the skill level. These days, finding someone to be a fireman means someone who can be a paramedic. That is someone who can pass a very difficult medical program. We're way past the drug test. We're into trying to find candidates who can actually do this work. It is not the drug test. It is the people who want to be here and are we finding them, locating them and bringing them in and making them feel welcome? Because even once we get them, we find that people leave. Sometimes talking to the fire chief, it seems like we're just passing the same three or four guys, cows around for a while till they settle down.
And this person's going to make the difference?
Yes, yes.
How will we know that? How, other than someone coming in and, and leaving, how will we know that they're doing what you intend for them to do?
So normally what you do is you do studies and you do questionnaires, you do surveys. You ask the public, public being in this case your employee base, what are they looking for? You ask applicants, what are you looking for? They being serviced by us. Are we addressing their needs? If you get a better return going down the road because you're doing things different that we never thought of, that we're not seeing, um, then you know you're doing the right thing. Another big item is you'll see this person working with a diversity council at a couple of different levels. There'll be a senior diversity council, which will include the senior administration and council members. There'll be employee diversity councils to help draw, find out what's out there that we're not hitting so we can pull in more people and hire more people and they'll stay.
Um, well, maybe you and I need to sit down and talk offline because I don't want to spend all night long making six other people angry at me for asking too many questions.
Councilman, I enjoy when you call me.
The, a couple of other real quick questions. One of them is, um, Mr. Zorn, are you on the line?
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Yes.
All right. I, I've been in, uh, on the whole time. I, I, several remarks at the appropriate time, but I am here.
Okay. One of the things that we took as a council in several years, a number of years ago, and maybe it was even before you came here, was we wanted to pay our staff at a, a level that was, uh, attractive, but we didn't ever intend to be the tip of the spear. So we set a, uh, level of 75 percentile. That was our goal of paying our people. Has that changed?
Uh, if I may, Madam President, if you look at the block of our hiring, we have been bringing them in typically at 75% of range. It depends upon the skill set and where that individual is. But the last time we looked, uh, they were clustered at about 75%. Uh, an action taken, I, I'm sorry, I don't have the exact year. We finally did put in, uh, step increases upon, uh, for our management team, and that allows people to move progressively down that scale. So the block of employees, the last time we looked, were at 75%. Some were less, some were slightly higher, but they are now moving along that scale in those steps, uh, equivalent to, um, what the, our members have in Chief Holman and other bargaining, uh, groups. And I'm, I'm sorry, I forget the exact year we put that in place. I think that was in, uh, in the fall of 19, but we, I can confirm that.
Okay, well, I just want to make sure that, uh, in the last couple of years, uh, I missed it. The other, the other thing that I have is I am, uh, very strong on believing that our city administrator needs an assistant, and I would place that above hiring this person. Uh, because this is an, this is an additional person that's not in our budget. The assistant to the city administrator is in our budget and, uh, it would make, I think it would make the city run better because the city administrator could spend more time doing things rather than typing letters and stuff. My, just my thoughts. And I'll say that's my last question.
Okay. James or Fred, did y'all want to, um, add anything else for Mr. Frazier or no?
You know, to his, his last comment, uh, Mr. Meadows and I are working on the appropriate, uh, position. There was some matter, some matters in the previous person who sat in that position that needed to be resolved. I believe those are resolved at this point and we can move on with, uh, filling that position.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for, thank you for your questions, Mr. Frazier. Councilman Hoskins?
Thank you. You know what? I mean, Councilman Frazier just took all of the questions, so I, I don't have any for you.
Okay. Thank you. Councilman Mandelbaum?
No, I think all my questions have been answered, um, but I definitely think that the, it's, it's, this position is, uh, needed in the city, so I'm, I'm in favor of it. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm in favor of this position and I also believe that timing is everything in light of everything that's going on right now with COVID and what's going on in the world. And I see it in the work area where there's so much bias and unconscious bias that is taking place and the training is just being brought forward, that this is something that needs to happen. Um, and I know that Mr. Frazier asked about what happened in the city to make us, uh, start looking at this position. It's not just what started, it's things that have been going on. Um, there are, um, from employee to management, manager to, I mean supervisor, supervisor to manager, manager to executive, there are different situations that have happened throughout the months and years within the city that we are now taking a different look at. Some things are happening simply because another person doesn't understand the background of someone that's sitting right next to them because their two backgrounds are different. With a little bit of, um, acknowledgement or education, that person might get along with that person a little bit better or understand a comment that is made a little bit better. Even as, uh, council president, I'm, I'm, I feel and hear things that are gender biased that sometimes I bring attention to people and they say, "Oh, well, I never took it that way. I never understood it to be that way or I didn't mean it that way." Um, but we have to know sensitivity points and I just think this position will help us to do that and to help us to get along a whole lot better. And it's just the timing, the way the world is, the way our work atmosphere is, and like, uh, Mr. Meadows brought out, if we want to bring quality people in, and I've always said that I believe the City of Southfield has some of the best employees ever, um, given all the circumstances. And over the conversations that I've had with several people that work for the city, um, this position is very much needed and this is the right time because of everything that's going on. And people are willing now to speak up and say, "Hey, I didn't understand it." And we are a diverse community and in more ways than one, as Mr. Meadows brought, brought out. So, um, I didn't mean to say so much, but that's just some of the things that I'm hearing and understand why we need this position. So, um...
Madam President?
Yes.
Yeah, this is Administrator Zorn. I apologize. My initial remarks, I made them, but the, the heart of the remark is when we better, when we understand each other better, we can do better to optimize our functionality. I think many of you know that every other week my man, the core group of my management team meets and as I interact with, with different people, and I, whether it's our, our employees or management, the leadership team here, it comes down to, can we better understand each other? We're coming from back, you know, multiple backgrounds. You said a key word, the bias and unbiased, uh, training, those sensitivity points. The times have changed and it's about how we retract, attract and retain talent as an organization. And the, um, early on, we did, we, my first thought was to do some type of assessment. The training piece isn't just also on the, uh, diversity and inclusion. There will be other trainings, uh, elements in this. As we've said before, I, and Mr. Meadows mentioned this, we're, uh, proposing a core executive group to help guide, uh, this position and then an employee group to also help guide us. I'm hoping that, you know, each year as an organization, Southfield does a great job with professional training and certification, but this training is also just as important to improving, uh, how we perform. Regarding compensation, we looked at not just academic, but the county recent, Oakland County recently, uh, created a position. And I'll tell you, I, I think our, our range is right about where we need to be for a city our size. I've been monitoring postings in the International City Managers Association and I, I think we're in the ballpark where we'll be able to attract a, a quality candidate. And I appreciate Council's support on this. I do believe that this, um, is a, a critical component of running a, a modern government. So I hope we'll have your support on the 14th.
Thank you, um, city administrator. I appreciate that. Did anyone else have a comment? Mayor, did you want to comment or city clerk or attorney?
Uh, this is Mayor Seider. I'm in support of this position. I think we, uh, need to always, training is always something you have to do over and over to, because you have new people, but also refresher. And I think it's, we need to look inward and, um, if we're good, great, um, but let's get, let's be even better.
Thank you. Okay, uh, if there's anyone else? Okay, if there's no other comments, uh, this can go to our consent agenda on the 14th. Okay, um, our next item?
Um, excuse me, Madam President, sorry to cut you off. We do have a state rep on the line now, uh, Kyra Harris Bolden.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Bolden?
Hello, and good evening to our council president, this honorable body, Madam Clerk, and, um, our mayor of Southfield. Happy to, uh, just give a brief update. I know you have a very robust agenda. Um, and so I do want to note, uh, that myself and Senator Jeremy Moss, uh, will have a coffee hour coming up on June twenty-first at five-thirty. The location is to be announced, so please sign up for both of our newsletters to keep updated on that. Uh, we also have a town hall coming up on June twenty-eighth. Uh, it is called Saving Our Democracy, and so we will have our Secretary of State, Jocelyn Benson, Senator Moss, Senator Baer, and Voters Not Politicians. We'll be talking about disinformation campaigns as well as redistricting and the voter suppression laws that are making its way through the legislature. Um, and so if you want to hear, uh, more information than, uh, this brief update, I invite you to, um, attend those events. Um, I want to let everybody know that we have been doing a business of the month and a frontline worker, um, of the month. Our, uh, chief has been a recipient of the frontline worker of the month. And if you want to nominate someone, uh, please go to housedems.com/bolden. Um, and we will, um, uh, take your, um, option into consideration to, um, receive a tribute. Um, you know, we are just, uh, it's budget time, and, uh, we are now going into reconciliation, which means that the Senate proposed budget and the House proposed budget, um, basically, we need to reconcile. The House proposed buzz, budget, um, which in my last update, I informed everybody, um, that they left about a billion dollars on the table, um, for, um, for working families. And so a lot of that came from our COVID relief dollars from the federal government. Uh, and that still stands, um, true, um, there, within the House budget that we're going into reconciliation in. It still leaves a lot of money, almost a billion dollars on the table. And so we're hoping to rectify that, uh, during, um, our, um, convening of the budget. And so we're hoping to get that wrapped up by the end of June. And again, please, uh, sign up for our newsletter so you can stay posted, um, on that. Uh, we are starting to do our legislative door knocking and calls, uh, which means we will be going do- door to door for folks that are in the thirty-fifth House District, which obviously includes Southfield, um, and Laker Village, Beverly Hills, Bingo Farms, and Franklin, to give out resource guides. And so we want folks to know where they can access resources in our communities, um, in Southfield and on the state level, um, for folks that, you know, may not know where to go or may just quite frankly be embarrassed to ask for help. So we're going door to door. Uh, we invite anybody that wants to help us, uh, to please email kyrobalden@house.mi.gov. Um, we are, we have a very, uh, robust goal, um, to reach our neighbors, to make sure they know what, um, resources are available to them. Um, I do want, uh, to acknowledge that, um, along with being a member of the Judiciary Committee and the Assurance Committee, I'm the Democratic Vice Chair of the Joint Committee on Administrative Rules. And every time I come on here, I say, well, we, we don't talk about the rules very much, but, um, I'm very proud to say that, um, after working with the governor's office and a racial disparities, uh, racial disparities task force appointed by the governor, um, there are now implicit bias training, uh, rules instituted for healthcare professionals. And I'm very proud to have worked with, uh, the administration on that. Um, so basically, I, I, and I'm so glad you all are talking about DEI and how important that is. I am the Chair of the DEI, um, Committee for my House Dems Caucus. And again, um, you know, just work with the administration on implicit bias training for healthcare professionals. It is so important, um, to retaining workers and to make sure that everybody, uh, feels comfortable in their workspace. Um, and so I commend, um, the conversation and the efforts that Southfield is making to institute some of the same measures, um, that we are concerned about on the state level. Um, have been very busy with bills, um, so I had two bill hearings last, uh, last week and one bill up tomorrow. Um, tomorrow, um, I have a bill that was actually a recommendation from the Elder Abuse Task Force led by our Attorney General Dana Nessel, of which I sit on that task force. And it will revise the laws to make more sense out of our guardians and conservators. Um, I, it, it's a really big issue, and I'm glad that we're finally tackling it. Um, guardians and conservators, um, have a lot of discretion and power, and we want to make sure that we are protecting our seniors, um, and that's one of my, um, top initiatives, is protecting seniors in our community. Um, let me see. Um, there are a few other things, um, again, I really invite anyone to come to a coffee hour or just reach out to our office, um, if you have any additional, um, questions. And I will, uh, cut my, uh, um, my update short to take any questions, uh, from this honorable body.
Thank you, as usual, uh, State Representative. We really, House Representative. I get them mixed up sometimes, but it's so nice to hear from you. And, uh, thank you for always staying in touch with us and being engaged with this community. Um, I will turn it over to council. Is, are there any questions? Does anyone have any questions rather than me doing a round robin? Does anybody have any questions? You can just speak up. Okay, hearing none. Mayor or anyone else? Mayor, do you have a question or anything for, uh, our State Rep?
No, I don't, but I thank, um, Representative Bolden for keeping us in the loop. Uh, we are, um, I think this is something that we're all in, very interested in seeing what the Senate goes, um, regarding, um, these, uh, voter bills, voter, um, suppression voter restrictions. I think that's, uh, something that's of interest to all of us. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Thank you again, our State Representative. We really appreciate you. Thank you so much for staying in touch and updating us and, uh, and for just joining us. Thank you very much.
Thank you for having me, and, um, I appreciate your time and all the work that you all do in this community.
Well, thank you. Uh, next we have, um, the appointment of Tyrese Beeks to the position of Director, Code Enforcement and Community Appearance for discussion?
Yes, um, Ma- Madam, uh, President, this is Administrator Zorn. Uh, I will be asking, uh, Mr. Meadows, uh, to speak to this. However, you know, the Director of Code Enforcement is, uh, an admini- uh, is an appointment of the city administration, administrator subject to council approval. Uh, Ms. Beeks has been with us since December of nineteen ninety-nine. Um, she holds a bachelor's degree in business management and a master's of business administration. Um, I want to just comment, you know, I, I'd like council to take a step back. The, the last few years, code is taking on some very large projects that frankly had been a challenge for the city for, uh, for years, not just the code, uh, activities that they undertake day to day and making sure that people are comply- in compliance and responding to, uh, complaints. And those activities include the septic sewer. Tyrese has been a key part of working in that program, particular, uh, with, uh, under the direction of Maria Calhoun at that time. And then most recently, it's the business licensing. I'd also like to comment, uh, that Tyrese has been, uh, critical in working with us as we moved to the Southfield Solutions, which is, uh, an electronic format for complaint tracking and, um, we've done a real good job with that software. I think there's still some improvements that can be made that unfortunately COVID have, uh, challenged our ability to roll that out. Uh, so I am asking for, uh, council to confirm the appointment of Tyrese, uh, Banks to the Director of Code Enforcement, and, uh, I'll ask Mr. Meadows to speak to the grade and the salary range and, uh, other incidentals. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you.
Madam President, this is James Meadows. The, the grade has already been set. Um, it was set probably about a year, a year ago when we went to the director position for director, for this position to be a director as opposed to a manager. Uh, in terms of the pay, we had the pay at ninety-five thousand. Um, and in discussions with employees, one of the issues is, yes, we want you to take this position, but also normally employees are giving up overtime. So it's a balance between getting the person onto the pay grade and the balance of the overtime that they'll be losing versus the amount of hours they're going to be working more as a director. Uh, we've discussed the pay with Ms. Beeks, and she's fine with it at this number. Uh, I will tell you that I personally spent some time working with her, and she does a good job.
Okay, thank you. Um, I will open up for council at this, at this time. Uh, Councilman Brightwell?
Yes, I'm in favor of Ms. Beeks, uh, getting this position. I've, I had opportunity to interact with her, I believe in that several times, and, um, and based on the fact of some residents, especially, I've gotten calls from residents, so Ms. Beeks has followed up. She, um, uh, I, I was impressed that she had a particular foul, uh, when something that was one of the residents' neighborhood, and the resident would appear I could call me, but, uh, Ms. Beeks said it got to me. I was able to get to her, call her back. So I'm, I'm in favor of this. But, but, but one, one thing for a, uh, from a, uh, political standpoint, and, and, and most of you know, I'm, I'm a finance guy, and who will put this thing together, uh, these numbers? Um, it, we, we seem to vacillate between putting the name of the account and the account, or just putting the account number. Um, historically, my whole life, I would like to see the name of the account and the account number. Like, now I meant to put the one we dealt with before this, with the, uh, DEI position. It just gave the account number. And throughout this, I mean, we have some that has the name, the nomenclature, and the account number, or just the account number. So Fred or whoever put this together, can, on a going forward basis, can we just be consistent? Put the name and the account number when we associate it with what account these dollars are coming out of?
Yes, sir, we can correct that. Thank you.
Okay. Well, uh, with that, I, 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 I definitely appreciate Ms. Beeks, and I appreciate, um, her, um, responsibility. I was, I was, um, and she, she walked in the room, I would never, I wouldn't even be able to recognize her, but she's been very responsive to this several reasons I've had to reach out to Code Enforcement, uh, over several months. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Councilman Cruz?
Yes, I have nothing, uh, to ask in regard to this. I'm pretty familiar with it. And, uh, think it's a great selection, and, uh, hopefully, uh, wish her, I wish her all the best in moving forward.
Thank you. Councilman Frazier? Oops, we can't hear you, Mr. Frazier. Okay, we'll come back to Myron. Um, we can't hear you, Mr. Frazier. We can come back. Councilman Hoskins?
Uh, thank you. I don't have any questions, but, uh, I'm, uh, looking forward to voting on this, uh, appointment.
Thank you. Uh, Councilman Mandelbaum?
Um, no, I'm very much in favor of, um, Ms. Beeks. I've, um, had to, since the departure of Dr. Calhoun, I've worked with, uh, Ms. Beeks, uh, several items. Um, and she's been very responsive, very helpful. Um, and I think, you know, one thing that we've talked about with, uh, HR is making sure that we have succession planning, and I think this is a perfect example where, uh, she, once, um, Dr. Calhoun moved, um, to HR, Ms. Beeks was able to, uh, step right in, and she's been doing a great job. So I, I fully support this appointment.
Thank you. Councilwoman Banks?
Thank you. Um, to Mr. Meadows, is there a reason why this position, um, wasn't that posted?
The determ- the determination whether to post or not post the position at this level is driven by a number of factors. I normally sit down and speak with the, usually the hiring authority, which would be Fred in this case, regarding what is required to fill this position. Um, if there's someone in the house that we've trained, we take a first look at that person. If we have someone who's been in this business for twenty years and is specialized in the Southfield area and the types of code and appearance that Southfield does, then we take a long hard look at that person as opposed to the posting and bringing somebody in to train them to understand how Southfield works and does code. So my recommendation was, take a look, hard look at the internal before you post.
And I guess I just always think of transparency and just being equal and fair for all. And, you know, you know, this person can also apply, but no one can ever criticize anyone in the organization by saying, you know, you never posted a position. You never gave me an opportunity, whether they were, um, you know, qualified or unqualified. That's where, you know, the process comes in. So, um, I personally feel that positions should be posted and internal candidates, um, can apply for them. Also, the salary range for P starts out at eighty-one thousand eight hundred and sixty, and it goes to a hundred and ten thousand seven hundred and forty-nine. Why did, um, why did you come up with a starting salary of ninety-five thousand two hundred and thirteen dollars versus, um, a little bit lower? I know you mentioned something about overtime. However, if my memory is correct, um, you know, overtime isn't part of like the final average compensation if someone were, were to retire. So to be promoted into a higher range at a higher salary, um, gives them more opportunity for step increases where when you start them more at the top of the range, they only have, uh, a few years, and then they're at the top of the range. And, you know, that's when people are like, well, you know, I think I deserve an increase, and I think we've started them too high. So can you answer that question, please?
Councilwoman, I'm trying to understand the question. It was the question, why was this particular salary picked? This number?
The ninety-five thousand two hundred and thirteen, correct?
Again, as I mentioned, that it's a balance when you promote somebody. If there's someone making overtime, or in this case, assuming substantially more duties, then the salary has to be enough to have the person set aside not getting overtime and also assuming additional duties.
Is, uh, I'm just curious, when someone retires, is overtime calculated in their, um, retirement formula?
It depends on what, um, retirement plan you're in. To my understanding, in SIRS, no, but if you're in police and fire, yes.
Yeah, that, that's what I wanted to know, SIRS. Okay, I have no further questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Frazier?
Yeah, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Oh, okay, because I was not muted before. I was talking my head off and apparently nobody was listening. Uh, I have no problem with the promotion, but I do have a question. Uh, does she have a current evaluation for, uh, a current evaluation?
Could someone answer that, please?
John, are you on, Mr. McReina? Yes, sir, I am. And I did conduct an evaluation probably a month ago. So yes, she does.
Great. Okay, because that's, that's important that when we're looking at people for promotion, we need to know their, uh, how they handle their job prior to being a candidate for a promotion. So, thank you. No, I have no problem with the promotion.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone else have a comment or anything regarding this item? Okay, hearing none, this will move to the consent agenda for June fourteen. Our next item is a presentation and discussion for the Residential Unit Development District for the McKinley School project located at eighteen three-three-zero George Washington.
Good evening. Next slide, please. As Council President indicated, this is a consideration for Residential Unit Development District. I want to take a moment to remind the council of the purpose of the R U D D. Five years ago, it was maybe six when we were last going through the master plan process. We identified needs for additional housing and alternative housing to be competitive for the attraction and retention of young family and family-forming uh, uh, community as well as empty nesters. At the same time, coincidentally, the Southfield School District, former superintendent Dr. Woods, reached out to me and said that they had between a half a dozen and dozen vacant or underutilized school properties and wanted to know what they could do with it. We proposed creating a residential unit development to create higher density to provide the developer incentives to spend the kind of money that they would need to fix up some of these older schools as well as a number of school sites had excessive vacant property that could be developed anywhere from single-family to attached family, attached townhomes and so forth. And it's with this tool similar to the overlay development district that we think that we can repurpose and have adaptive reuse of these older dilapidated or underutilized school buildings. And McKinley would be the first, uh, the first property to be considered under this, this economic development tool or, or community development tool. Next slide. As many of you are aware, the school site has been vacant for several years, formerly occupied by a charter school and before that it was part of the public school system. There is multiple phases of the original school building as well as some temporary building classrooms that were constructed on the east portion of the property that are severely dilapidated. On my understanding, there's water damage, mold, rodents and, and other debris and, and environmental conditions with that temporary school building. And the, the existing structure has seen some deterioration for lack of use in utilities. Next slide. So with that in mind, there is basically five main areas that the council and the city should consider is conformance with the goals and mission of the objectives of the Residential Unit Development District, compatibility with adjacent uses. Uh, and there's a variety of checklists that we look at, protection of the natural environment, compatibility with the future land use plan and compliance with the applicable regulations. Next slide. The site is currently designated as moderate density, single-family and it currently has a zoning of R four, which is one of the versions of single-family with various density requirements as far as lot size and billing setbacks and so forth. With R one being at the highest end, R four being at one of the, the lower ends as far as lot size and density. Next slide. And conceptually, this is a two-phase project. Phase one is the conversion of the existing school into eight res- eighteen residential condominium units, removal of the temporary portable structures and restoration of the eastern portion of the property into lawn, open space. Uh, the eighteen residential condominiums include nine one-bedroom units ranging from approximately nine hundred and fifty square feet to just over a thousand square feet, six two-bedroom units in the twelve-hundred to seventeen-hundred square foot range and three, three-bedroom units, over twenty-one hundred square feet up to twenty-six hundred square feet. Phase two, conceptually includes eleven two-story attached single-family units for a total of twenty-two units. Units are three-bedroom units ranging from eighteen hundred square feet to just over a thousand square feet. Next slide. When this was originally came to planning commission over a year ago, it was a much denser project and had attached single-family in a row townhouse type. Based on comments from the public, the overall density has been reduced and the units are more conforming to the scale of the single-family residential while respecting the Tudor style of the original school building. And you'll see that in some upcoming concept slides. So overall, the, the density, the number of units has been reduced, more green space has been added. And I think there's a little bit better flow with the project. Next slide. Uh, this is a conceptual landscape plan for the full development of the site. The other thing I wanted to note is that previously there was proposal for on-street parking that has been eliminated. All the parking will be contained within the two phases of development. Next slide. And as I previously stated, phase one is just the conversion of the existing school building into eighteen condominium units, the removal of the temporary school structure and restoration of lawn of the eastern half of the property. With that, I know we have Mr. John Abella, the architect for the project. I'd like to turn this over to him, Madam Chair, to go through the details of the project. And then at the end, myself and Mr. Abella and his, their site engineer will be available to answer any questions that the council may have. Next slide. So John, do you wanna take over the presentation?
As you can see, this, this project has taken a long time to evolve and we really wanted to respect what was already existing. And when I say that, I don't only mean the building, surrounding area.
Madam President, I can't hear. I'm sorry.
Right. I'm sorry, sir. Can you please speak closer to your speakers? We can't, we can't hear you.
If I change microphones, does that sound better?
Yes, much better.
Okay, thank you. As I was saying, when we, when we first were brought in to look at this, it wasn't only the building that we were looking at. We were looking at the surrounding area. We were looking at the neighborhood. We were looking at context, looking at it from a, of a micro point of view and then started to walk out further and, you know, really spend time not only looking at, look, looking at the sort of microcosm of, of, of the McKinley School, but also the George Washington neighborhood and then further out how this would reach out into, into the city of Southfield. And when, when, when we were looking at the school, you know, we had to make some certain deci- decisions. And one of them was to retain the overall architectural character of the school, which seemed to be something that was grounded not only on the site, but also within the, with, within the neighborhood. So we had to respect the context there and then looking at the nineteen-fifties addition and how can we make that look more like the existing school building that, that is attached to. So we went through a lot of iterations to really put this piece in harmony with the, with the existing structure. Uh, can we go to the next slide? I'm hoping it's the overall. Is there a next slide?
Can we go to the next slide, please?
Uh, I mean, this is the, this is the north end. Is there, Carrie, was the, was the overall?
Yeah, John, John, that's why I said you'll just have to take the cues from the slides that are available.
Okay, thanks.
Next slide. Do you have anything you wanna say more on the elevations?
I, I really, we just wanted to respect the, the overall character and the proportions of the existing structure. And we tried to carry that through because now there are, there are, there are, there are these single punched windows where in the existing nineteen-fifty-fifties addition, you will see these long horizontal bands that which are really typical of a nineteen-fifty school building. But you really don't see that character in this American Tudor flavor that we're trying to approach. Can we go to the next slide, please?
Next slide. And again, these are just the east and west elevations. Next slide.
Yeah, I can try to remain compatible. Uh, the overall floor plan, we had to, of course, look at the existing structure, look at, look at the existing classrooms and how, and how we could best maintain the character and also afford a nice, comfortable living unit within there. That's why you'll see that there are these single, single bedroom units because we were staying within the confines of the, of the classroom. And typically between the classrooms, there was a restroom for, for each side and then a small like work area. So we began to use those areas as, as more or less wet walls where, where we could have additional bathrooms and or, and or bedrooms. Can we go to the next slide, please? And this is just showing that we can take some of these units and make them adaptable. And because it's, because it is a single level unit, we can, we can make the unit ADA compliant and/or ADA adaptable quite easily. And this is just showing that we have gone through that exercise. Can we go to the next slide? And on the, on the second floor, the argument can, can, can again be made that any, any unit and out of the eighteen units that are in this structure, only three of them have, have, have two levels. Any of the other eighteen units can, can be made ADA adaptable and/or compliant. Can we go to the next slide? And then this is the existing kindergarten, which we plan on renovating and also keeping the character of that existing kindergarten. Obviously, we're gonna bring it up to code and we're gonna add better lighting and, and refinish a lot of the existing casework that's in there and/or reuse some of the casework that we're, that we're taking out of, of the other classrooms to make this really an integral and then warm portion of this common area.
John, do you, do you wanna just talk about the sand paintings and some of the tile work?
Um, you know, this, you, you're all, you're all very fortunate to have such, such wonderful artwork and, and tile work in this portion of the, of the building, in the, in the original portion of the, of the building. And our plan is to maintain all of that artwork because it, it is such an integral part of, of the character of this, of this space. So the plan is to protect it, renovate around it and then if it, if it needs any, any type of restoration, that, that will be done. And the, uh, the, the tile work that you see on the fireplace is in really terrific shape, luckily. Now, you know, the, the ceiling's falling down, so obviously we, we're gonna have to replaster the ceiling and the walls. We, we have to update mechanicals in this space and of course the lighting. But the, we've been protecting a lot of this beautiful artwork and we plan on continuing to do so. Can we go to the next slide? And then this is a typical living room. You, you're basically standing in the, in the, in the kitchen looking, looking towards the living dining area. And again, you can see these, these, these really large expansive windows that allow a lot of natural light in. The plan is, again, to recycle as much of the existing wood that we can to make these beautiful wall units that, delving units, benches, even some, some, some incidental furniture that may be out in the, in the corridor.
John, what, John, what is the ceiling height in these classrooms?
Uh, I believe it's, I believe the clear height is twelve-six and a half, twelve-four foot seven. Uh, so it's a nice, almost loft-like feel, but you know, we are gonna finish the ceilings and we're gonna double insulate between, between the floors, so there's not a lot of sound transmission, whether it's horizontal and or, and or vertical.
Okay, thanks. Next slide, please.
And then this is looking from the living room back, back towards the kitchen area. Again, we wanna leave it open as much as possible. And there are options in the, in, in the kitchen over the, over that small bar area where the, where the, where the seats are, that we could actually have cabinets over that unit or that portion as well. You know, we would, we would alter the lighting accordingly, but they're all laid out relatively the, the same way with, with options for, for additional storage, if you will. Thank you. Next slide. Same slide, we forward or was that the end of it? I mean, we can talk about the secondary buildings. These are, these are the garages and the, and the pavilions that are, that are on the site. In the, in the existing building, the portion that we are adaptively reusing, there are eighteen units. Each one of those units will, will have a two-car garage associated with them and also, and also storage. And that's what this graphic represents. The image along the bottom is a, is a pavilion that we are proposing to, to construct in kind of the U-shaped portion of the, of the, of the school. And it, and just to know, because I know there's been a lot of talk about this, these are for sale units. These are, these are not units that are, that are for rent. Can we go to the next slide, please? And these were some renderings of the single-family attached. We actually have four, four types. Three of them are highlighted here. So we wanted to pick up on the character of the, of the existing school. I think the next slide probably has a better, I'm hoping it's the other. No, it's not. Okay. But can we go back? I'm sorry. Can we go back one slide then? So the, the point was to pick up on the, on the, on the proportions and character of the, of the existing McKinley School and then translate that to the, to the single-family attached units. We, we have the same type of character, similar brick involved here, some, some, some stone detailing as well. Can we go to the next slide now, please? And these are our typical floor plans, if you will. The ground floor, you know, has living room, kitchen, dining area as well as a powder room and, and then a attached two-car garage. And then the second floor has three bedrooms. Some of them have balconies. I mean, there are, there are options here to, to make like two larger bedrooms. Typically, these all have, have three bedrooms and then a balcony. Next slide, please. Again, more, more of the same, just showing you the type three and type four. Again, really, really nice spacious bedrooms, trying to keep in character with some of the larger houses that are located within the George Washington neighborhood. Next slide, please.
So this, this slide, John, is just to show the council that at one time we're considering row townhomes with much higher density and based on comments from the public, we, we broke it up into the smaller um, scaled attached single-family. So this is just again to show the, the changes that have been made throughout the process. Next slide.
Okay, this one I, I think is, is probably the best rendering of the bunch because you get to see the, the existing McKinley School and its character along with what we're proposing for the single-family attached housing. You can see that, you know, we really tried to meld the, the, the style. Still, still, still give them a, a unique character, but we really want it to be pedestrian-friendly, if you will. You know, they're set back from the, set back from the road. We plan on landscaping this. And, you know, compared to what you have now, which is this temporary unit that is rather ugly and rat-infested. I should mention something about the site and that is, you know, current, currently, it basically all drains to the east corner, the, the southeast corner. it basically all drains to the east corner, the, the, the southeast corner. All of that's going to be mitigated through a variety of things, you know, re, re-grading and storm, and storm detention and getting, getting rid of the culvert that's out in the, in, in the front along that side of George Washington Ave.
The, the next slide is the, the final slide that just shows again the master development plan for all phases. And with that, Madam Chair, we'll turn it back over to council for any questions of myself, John, or his colleague.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, council, I'll start with you, Mr. Cruz.
Uh, thank you, Madam President. Um, did we get a number on what the square footage of these spaces will be? And what the potential price point will be?
So go ahead, go ahead, John, if you want to give them a range again. Uh, that wasn't one of the slides, but we didn't talk about price point, if you could do that.
Right, um, first of all, it's all going to be market rate. Uh, we have, we have units in the, in the existing school that, like the smallest unit is about nine hundred and sixty square feet. The largest one is a little over twenty-two hundred square feet. The, uh, the, the single-family attached, they're between eighteen hundred and twenty-two hundred square feet, and we're looking at roughly around three hundred and thirty thousand dollars. I mean, that's a ballpark number. It could be higher depending on finishes. Um, so does that answer your question, sir?
Uh, you saying three hundred and thirty for the detached pieces, right?
Correct.
But the, uh, but the other portion you said is nine sixty to twenty-two hundred feet, uh, what are those going to be about?
I would, these are, these are, these are, these are guestimates, but probably in the two twenty-five to, to, two fifty range and then upward. Some of those are, you know, they, the large units are twenty-two hundred square feet. I mean, I would, I would guesstimate that those are going to be, you know, between three hun- three hundred and three hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Mr. Bella, you're still going in and out, and it sounds like you're a, a distant or it's harder for us to hear you. So if you could come a little closer maybe to the speaker? I'm sorry.
Sure.
Just so that we can get a clearer understanding. Did you hear him well, Mr. Cruz?
Uh, kind of, I think, but if you could repeat that, uh, last portion.
Turned off my video. Hopefully that helps a little bit with the audio. What I was saying was that, what I was saying is that the, uh, the McKinley condos within the, within the existing structure are probably going to start out, you know, somewhere in, in, in the mid, mid two hundreds and probably go up to the mid-three hundreds. And the, uh, and the duplex, I'm, I'm sorry, the, uh, the single-family attached will probably be, you know, in, in, in the mid-three hundreds.
Okay, got you. All right, and then, uh, there, we've received a number of questions as it relates to the traffic flow. Uh, can you speak to, um, how that might affect the flow of traffic in that area? Is it going, I mean, um, but, um, will it be a nuisance?
We don't, we don't believe so. The, uh, our, our civil engineers have done, uh, a, a cursory traffic study, and it's shown that obviously compared, compared to a school, it's, it's come down to about a third as much traffic. We believe that the flow, um, the, the way that the site is organized, it's probably efficient that, that we could, we could get it to be. And I can't recall the trips. We had a slide with the amount of trips, and I'm going to ask Tricia, our civil engineer, Tricia, can, can you respond to that?
All right, I can. Can you guys hear John?
I can hear you.
Yes, we can hear you. Thank you.
Sure. So we looked based on the building programming at, um, both the total number of trips expected to the site um, and some information on peaking and intensity of trips to the site compared to the baseline, which is the existing school use. Um, and to, you know, to give you a frame of reference, um, you know, based on the average numbers, um, when this was a school, we'd be looking at, um, about, you know, nineteen weekday trips. Um, in the case of the multifamily housing, um, we're looking at significantly less than that. Um, and the important differentiation here is not only is it a less total number of trips, um, it's also a significantly less intense peak. So where you have a school that has a very acute window, a very short window of opportunity for students to get dropped off and picked up, you get a lot of queuing and vehicles moving through the area. Um, a lot of vehicles moving through the area at the same time, which puts, puts pressure on the intersections in the surrounding area. With the housing, you get those trips, um, spread out throughout the day. So those were the key findings from our, from our preliminary review.
Okay. And we, so, and the city is going to be able to receive, uh, taxes off of all of these units, right? Is, since we're selling them, they'll be, they'll be taxed and just like any other property. Is that correct?
That is correct, that is correct, sir.
Okay. Thank you very much.
And in addition, you know, gain the community members that would come along as residents. Exactly.
Absolutely. All right, thank you. I have no further questions, Madam President.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Mr. Frazier?
I don't know. Uh, in the, especially in the main school building, are there firewalls in between the units?
Yes, yes, there are. Um, each, each unit is basically an independent, uh, unit. The, uh, the overall school is, 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 is fire-rated and there are also sprinklers within the school. I mean, in the, the, the addition.
Okay, I know the, uh, Michigan building codes, uh, would love to have everybody's house sprinkled. So that's good. Thank you.
Yes, yes, thank you.
Oh, that's it, Mr. Frazier?
That's it, yes.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Hoskins?
Uh, thank you. Um, for, uh, you mentioned that there, that you guys did a, a traffic study for this? Um, and I'm not sure if that's proprietary or not, but is there a way that maybe we could see that?
Well, um, Mr. Hoskins, and we, we can provide the, the results, but in general, um, the Traffic Institute has numbers on similar-sized school sites, uh, that we look at what um, prime use based on the population of school, the type of school and stuff, that it generates so many trips per day uh, for parents, for faculty and buses. As a charter school, charter schools typically have, uh, parents dropping off and picking up and they don't have the bussing. Uh, we also use a standard of single-family homes generate nine point five-five trips per day. That's, that could be, uh, you and your spouse, um, leaving for work in the morning, that's two trips, and coming back in the evening, that's four trips, and then running to the store, or you might have a teenage, uh, kid that runs out back and forth. That's where the nine point five-five total trips per day. Uh, multiple family tends to have less trips per day, around six point eight-seven. So you could do a parallel plan on, uh, if this was developed purely as single-family units, there's probably twelve to fifteen units could be built versus the forty units. They're calculated different. And then the traffic engineers look at peak usage, like eight AM, uh, or, you know, to nine AM in the morning for rush hour and then coming back. So that's the analysis that was done, and we've got kind of the, uh, quantitative numbers on that, which we can provide to you.
All right, thank you. I, I appreciate that. Um, and the previous iteration of this, there was, there was parking on the street, but we got rid of the parking on the street.
Yeah, that, I mean, that's an, that's a kind of traditional neighborhood designed to have on-street parking. Uh, it reduces the, uh, amount of impervious surface because you're taking advantage. You could see a lot of the frontages in the right-of-way. Uh, and so the overall, uh, number of units were reduced and we eliminated, uh, not we, but through the process, the, the on-street parking was eliminated. On-street parking typically slows traffic down, but as a response to some of the concerns of the neighborhood, that was recommended that that be removed. And therefore, there's more green space, uh, up front along George Washington Ave.
So can you still park on the street or will there be something there like for, uh, enforcing not, to, to enforce not parking on the street or?
And again, that, that's an order that, you know, council does on a neighborhood-by-neighborhood issue, you know, basis. I mean, the, the streets are under the city's purview, so that the, the city can decide if they want to. I don't, I don't believe there's currently permissible parking there, but if it needs to be enforced, I know that the city council has approved ordering or working with the police department or the traffic engineer to have no parking on the street. But I, I know that this project has visitor parking in addition to, um, required parking for, for the units themselves.
Um, and that actually goes to another question I had. Um, so the, the school, and you may have said this, uh, um, or John may have said this. The school has the two, two-car garages. The condos in the school have the two-car garages. What, for the single-family homes, where's the, where are they parking for them?
John, they're integrated into the rear of the units, but go ahead, John.
Yeah, that's exactly what I was going to say, Terry. Um, if you, if we can go back to the plans, uh, you can see that on the, on the ground floor, there, there's basically, one more, please, I believe. Wait, go back one more. This is, this is the old plan. We need to go back. Yeah, this one will work. If you, if, if you look at type four ground, ground floor plan, um, you see that coming from the, let's call it south at the, at the bottom, the entryway, living, kitchen, dining area, um, small mechanical room and, and bathroom. And then behind that, it's kind of a void space. That's a two-car garage that is attached.
Oh, okay.
And, and Councilman Hoskins, I believe, um, there are currently no parking signs on the street around this area.
Okay. All right, I think that is, that's all the questions I have for now.
You could go to slide twenty-eight, please, back to the question, the, the next slide, the, the last comment and questions. Thank you.
Okay, uh, Mr. Mandelbaum?
Yeah, thank you. Um, you know, a lot of the questions that I had have been answered. Um, I know, um, there were some residents who sent us emails, who had some questions and, you know, just to, to recap, these are not going to be rentals. These are going to be sold. There's not going to be any renters. Um, this will enhance the neighborhood. The parking study shows that it's, it's not going to, um, be as crazy as when there was a school. Um, and there are other things that can be done after the fact with, um, driveways and, and streets that the neighborhood could initiate. But, you know, I think that from what we did about a year ago, a little bit before, I think that these, these improvements have taken into account some of the, um, concerns the neighborhood had. And I think this is a much better plan than what was done, um, last year. And I think this will truly enhance the neighborhood. I know several people have already told me they, uh, they are waiting for the homes, not necessarily condominiums, but the homes to be available because, uh, they are, want to move into this neighborhood and they like the fact that they're going to be new homes. Um, you know, I really do think that, you know, adding, adding sidewalks and, and other amenities will be a great enhancement to this neighborhood. So I'm, I'm in favor of moving this forward, um, to, to our next meeting, but I, I, I think they, this is a, a great, a great, much improved plan from what we saw last. So that's all my comments. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Councilwoman Banks?
Thank you. Um, Mr. Crowe, did you say there were a total of forty units once the entire project is complete?
That's correct. There's, there would be eighteen units in the former school property and then eleven, um, attached single-family for a total of twenty-two units in both phases. And then the ultimate build-out would equal forty units.
Okay, thank you. And then on this present slide, um, I thought that there were going to be two entrances into this complex, but, um, I, it shows three, so is it two or three?
There, there's two two-way entrances from George Washington Ave, and the one that's on Continental Street is a one-way out only.
One-way out, okay. So does George Washington exit on the, um, Southfield Road?
That's correct, and Continental Street exits onto Ten Mile. So if you, if you look at just the top and right-hand side of the screen, you're seeing the parking lots for the commercial development that corner Ten, Ten Mile and Southfield Road. So this, um, this development is actually acting as a buffer transition between the, uh, detached single-family and the more intense commercial. But they have, this development will have easy access to both Ten Mile and Southfield Road, less than, you know, half a block away.
Is there a light at George Washington and Southfield?
I do not know that off the top of my head. I don't know if anybody else does.
Because I know some of the residents were concerned that the traffic, um, there may be increased traffic within their subdivision, but, um, if George Washington goes out to Southfield Road and the other street goes out to Ten Mile, I don't even see why they would go through the subdivision.
I, I, again, they, they are residential streets, but they're, they're designed to handle, you know, twenty-five mile an hour traffic for a certain volume. I, I think most people are going to take the path of least resistance and try to get out to the main, the main roads. I'm not going to say that somebody might not try to cut through somewhere else, but I, overall, if you look at the peak times of usage and spread out over day, uh, this is considerably less than, uh, what it was and only slightly greater than if this was developed as, as single-family. But really, I don't, as I said before, with these older school sites, I don't think it's, I think it's cost prohibitive for a developer to come on, try to take all the demolition and restoration costs and try to only develop, uh, you know, a dozen single-family homes. I don't think they could recoup the cost. So, um, I don't, I don't personally think this is going to be a significant traffic issue based on the number of units and the type of people living in these units. Um, again, I, there's, there's going to be fewer trips per day and they're going to be spread out throughout the day.
Okay. Um, I have no further questions. Um, all my other questions were asked by everyone else. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilman Brightwell?
Yes, I think we've had a pretty good discussion. Terry and, uh, John, what, what would be the population of cars once this is fully built out? And what's, what's the availability of the number of cars?
Well, if, if we just did simple math, if there's forty units, there's two cars per unit, that's a total of eighty cars. But it's really about the volume, and I believe probably likely the, um, school condominiums are going to be more of the empty nester, uh, where, where they're not going to be working. They might be retired, um, their trips per day are going to be less. You might have young professionals living in the attached condominium, probably with no children or maybe one younger child. And again, I, I think there's going to be a lot less traffic generated than if you had typical single-family with, um, two working, um, households with teenage children. I, I know myself, at one time, we had five cars at our house because I had three kids that were in the driving age. So I don't think the demographics that this is going to attract is going to generate a lot, a lot of traffic, even having two-car garages.
Okay, so given the simple math, be eighty-car max?
Cars, and then there's a, you know, there's some spaces for, for gas parking.
Okay, and the next question is quite similar. What would be the similar, what would be the capacity of human capacity there given the build-out? What's the, uh, how many bedrooms and how many people?
Well, they're, they range again from one to three bedrooms, but as you know, a number, a number of people Well, they're they range again from one to three bedrooms, but as you know, a number of people now are converting those bedrooms. Into office uses for work for home and. Type of units. Really generating like large families, so I think the the average household size is gonna be probably below our our average of two point one.
Okay, okay, so we don't have two point one per unit.
Have one, one to two people per unit.
Okay, yeah.
Not yet, I mean, someone could have a young child or, you know, they family forming and then they move on to another home af- after a certain period.
Okay.
I think the demographics are gonna be empty nesters or young professionals or early family forming of couples.
Okay, I'm I'm just trying to get to the simple math, I got eighty cars and then now I got the what we built, it would be. How many people, based on what we built, I'm not looking at anything other than speculative, just what's built if we.
Again, if there's eighty units, or excuse me, forty units and you have somewhere between two and two point three. Um persons per household, you're talking eighty to ninety plus people.
We got eighty, we got eighty car, okay, uh. The next guy, trying to get a ballpark of of uh volume of people and cars. This this gets so too, um has anyone speculated? What's the units on the tax rule, what would be the potential tax dollars coming into the uh to the city?
I I don't have a specific number, but I did ask the um assessor to prepare an opinion. Uh which he he said that this would increase the the value of of the surrounding. Uh homes and properties and he thinks how this is a positive, especially now that it's off the tax rolls. Um but I know that, you know, after we we before you come back to the public hearing, we could. We could probably have the assessors department do an estimate on on the total taxable value. Uh and what that might generate, Mr. Zorn might know that off the top of his head, but. Um we certainly can can uh try to get you a number before the public hearing.
Okay, yeah, I'd like to know that, this is this is a positive, I know this, you know, simple simple rough take. And the uh but if we can get a any professional opinion or professional estimate, that'd be, uh I definitely appreciate it. Okay, other otherwise, um I've I've appreciated it, it was enlightening, thank you.
Thank you, um Mr. Mayor? Mr. Mayor, do you have any comments? Okay, hearing none, Terry, do you have any um closing remarks or anything for us?
Just just that this will come back uh at your twenty-first public hearing and um. We'll uh we'll follow up on a couple of the other questions that were raised and be prepared with uh answers for council.
Um oh, Terry, there was one other question that we received uh through emails, um all the emails that we have, most of their questions were. Uh asked, but they were asking about a a gate to uh close off the street, I believe continental. For traffic going through to the neighborhood.
Well, I will I will um I will tell you that at the um the open house, um a number of. Um neighbors did approach me to ask me about about the possibility of doing a cul-de-sac or or closing Continental Street. I I did say that um that is a city street, uh that I would. Follow up with the city engineer about speed bumps, about speed tables. Uh I would follow up with the fire police, but any closure of Continental would adversely impact. Uh emergency services to the rest of the neighborhood. Um the city engineer said that um she would be open um to. You know, investigating these speed bumps, however, she said that they would have to be designed to um. Provide the speed that is designed for it twenty-five miles per hour and that it would be unlikely. That uh they could be created and still maintain the twenty-five mile per hour speed. And that that again, if uh if council, you know, considered starting to do this on public streets, that would be. Opening it up to uh the rest of the the city. So she wasn't uh completely opposed to it, but she was skeptical that it could be designed properly and still maintain. The design speed that uh public streets and residential areas should be maintained at, so I I did follow up on those issues.
And was that information given to the homeowners cuz they're the ones that were asking?
Well, that was from the the last time that we had a town hall meeting, this is the first the first meeting for discussion. So that that's why I'm presenting it now, um we did, we are, and again, this is still a fluid plan. There has been some discussion on possibly having the entrance. Um north to Continental Street as opposed to one-way uh on the western side, so there is still some. Discussion about maybe uh closing that one-way exit to Continental on the western part of the property and then. Just creating the one-way exit out to Continental on the north side, so we're still investigating that as well if that makes. Design sense for the traffic circulation of the site.
Okay, all right, well, thank you very much. Uh uh hearing no other questions um or comments, we will move this forward to the uh. Uh June fourteenth meeting?
No, June June twenty-first in this particular.
June twenty-first meeting, I'm sorry.
All right, thank you, we'll go on to, with your permission, we'll go on to the next. We go to the next slide first, with with your permission, we'll go on to the next.
Oh, yeah.
Presentation discussion regarding special use request for Lux Ballroom. Proposed to be located at two three eight three five Greenfield Road in the Cornerstone Shopping Plaza, next line. Us, event centers are um require special land use um approval in this district. Uh it's existing B two planned planned um business. And the special land use would allow for an event center as a place of assembly, next line. Uh so the site location is on the west side of Greenfield, just north of Nine Mile and um south of Mount Vernon. Next line. As council may be aware, this uh plaza has suffered from the loss of. Krogers as well as a a number of inline uh retail stores. And so it has a considerable amount of of vacant space available. And and more than an abundance of parking, next line. Uh it's currently uh within the um downtown development or cornerstone development area and it's zone B two. Which uh the future land use is supportive of this type of development, next slide. Next slide, please. So in the Cornerstone Plaza, um. The red indicates the proposed um retail space. And then the yellow is indicating the former Krogers at sixty-eight thousand square feet available. As well as four thousand square feet of another inline store. Uh so this would uh help to backfill some of the loss in in recent years due to market conditions, next slide. Uh and again, this is the um view from Greenfield looking back on the shopping center. I uh next slide, please. And this is the proposed floor plan, they are estimating uh maximum capacity around a hundred. Uh persons per event, next slide. So with that, I know we have um several people on the line, uh Mr. Alice Sevis. Uh I'd like to give him a moment to talk about the recommendation from the DDA, we also have uh Mr. Fred Nager. Who's uh representing the development owner group and then uh. Yenta Fletcher, I believe, is the proprietor as well as as some other members. So if we could, I'd like to start with Mr. Sevis to uh talk about um the recommendation from the DDA. And then I'll turn it over to the applicant to talk about her business plan for the site. Al, are you available?
Yes, thank you, Terry, um Madam Chair, thank you for a brief moment to share some of the DDA. Perspective on this, um at its May twenty-first meeting, the DDA board unanimously approved recommending. The uh special land use request to this honorable body for consideration. In addition to the presentation to the DDA board, uh the petitioners also had. The ability to make a presentation uh in front of the city's economic development committee. Where it was met with uh some positive comments. As you are aware, Mr. Nager is a longtime supporter of the city and specifically the DDA. He was a board member of our organization for over twenty years until his retirement in December of twenty twenty. In addition to the cornerstone development property, Mr. Nager also owns the advanced building located at Greenfield and Nine Mile. As well as the small retail strip mall located north of the advanced building. Um in each instance, he has invested significant dollars to improve the advanced building. And if you um have the opportunity to maybe grab lunch at the retail strip, you'll see that um. Uh restaurants, fast food restaurants such as RVs and the sub shops are doing very well there. Uh the property in question tonight, as Planner Cote has mentioned, uh is where the former Kroger site was located. Over the last year and a half, Mr. Nager has lost at least four to five tenants. The effect of the loss of these tenants has taken his occupancy down to approximately thirty-three percent. From a hundred percent just a few years ago. In addition, the valuation has been reduced from four point one million to approximately two point one million. It is a key property in the district as of from Greenfield, um we like to try and do as much as we can to help. Mr. Nager begin to fill some of those vacant spaces. As such, um because of this, the DDA board is requesting respectfully. Asking this honorable body for approval of the special land use request um at your next meeting. Uh thank you, Madam Chair, this concludes my remarks.
And and through the chair, if if I could ask um Mr. Nager if he wants to make a few comments and then we'll go to the petitioner.
Uh yes, uh I'll kind of keep it uh brief, uh we're just happy that uh Ms. Fletcher is uh. Interested in putting a a banquet type uh center there for. You know, the convenience for uh the city and whatnot and uh I think it would be a great use, actually. And we are struggling there at the center with Kroger, though they had occupied approximately fifty percent of the center, so. I mean, it was uh very devastating when they uh decided to move to uh Oak Park. So we're hoping to fill the space uh as soon as possible and we're working uh. Really, really hard to try to get that space filled and.
Thank you.
That's about it.
Ms. Fletcher, um would you mind just giving an overview for to the council on your business? Operations, your hours of operation and anything else that you'd like to share?
Um yeah, sure, thank you, Mr. Felt, so um again, my name is Denia. Fletcher, I. Of the Lux Ballroom and I'll go over the, just a couple of topics that we've covered in covered in the past. On how I intend to.
Ms. Fletcher, we're we're having some audio um issues with your presentation. Madam Chair, I I I'm not hearing her, I don't know if you are, um maybe we.
No, no, we can't hear anything, is there any?
Take some questions while she tries to reconnect, Ms. Fletcher.
Okay, that'll be.
May maybe you can re-recall in or or reconnect cuz we're having a hard time hearing you.
Thank you. While we uh wait for her to attempt to call back in, I will go to council for questioning. I'll start with you, Mr. Fraser, any questions on this project?
I was gonna ask, what kind of banquet facilities is she gonna have, is it uh? Uh informal kind of things or is it for parties, uh weddings? I know there uh Mr. Nager said about a hundred people, but uh what kind of food? Uh but I think she needs to be here to. To answer the questions that I have about the uh facility itself. Also, we had this uh another place that's kind of a unique. Uh one that was on uh Civic Center Drive and Loser, they had a dance studio. Uh is that still going on or not? I I presume with a COVID, they probably didn't have uh dance lessons there for a while.
So um.
Please let me know if you guys can hear me better.
Yeah, no, we we can now, Ms. Fletcher, so go go ahead and talk about your operations, um what type of events you'll have, your hours of operation, how.
Sure, and I did hear that question, so um I'll be sure to cover all the the topics in these questions, so. Um our hours of operation will be Monday through Friday from four PM until twelve AM and. Fri- I'm sorry, Monday through Thursday, four PM to twelve AM, Friday, Saturday and Sunday will operate from. Nine AM until twelve AM, so all of our events will be scheduled to end by twelve AM. Um we intend on hosting one hundred people as our maximum capacity. Um in terms of security that will be on hand, we have onsite security that will be provided at every event, um regardless of the size.
Yep, we lost you again.
Madam Chair, this is Alice Sevis, if if I may just respond to Councilman Fraser's question regarding the type of events?
Yes, please.
Um yes, um the type of events that are gonna be held uh include, as an example, graduation parties. Wedding showers, baby showers, um small weddings, if you will. Um events very similar to those uh which she previously held at her Farmington Hills location. So hopefully that responds to Mr. Fraser's question.
It did, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, so is my audio any better?
Yes.
Okay, okay, um thank you for answering that question for me, um I was gonna get to that. Um in mention of my previous location that was in Farmington Hills, but thanks for answering that question. Um so previously, we operated out of Farmington Hills from two thousand nineteen until recently in March of two thousand twenty-one. Um at that location, we held events such as baby showers, weddings, weddings, wedding rehearsals and receptions. Um meetings and corporate events and we intend to host those type of events at the Southfield location as well. Um and we do have events that we don't allow, so we won't allow any sweet sixteen parties. Any paid events or any events that will require tickets or admission at the door, we don't allow those type of events. We'll host intimate, private, social gatherings only. Uh we have a total of five full-time employees, one venue manager, two event managers and two cleanup personnel. In which at least one of our venue managers are at the venue during every event. Um as far as emergency address, we do have two doors, one front entrance door. And an emergency exit door at the rear of the building. Um food services will be provided by catering services, so there won't be any food. Um prepared on site, all of the food is gonna be approved or caterers will be approved from a list of. Catering companies that will provide to our clients, um which will be insured catering companies. And we'll also have catering opportunities for some of the neighboring businesses and some of the restaurants close by. Um if asked for parking, there's more than enough parking, so parking will be allowed for. For visitors of the space and we've already gone over and verified that there's. And we've already gone over and verified that there's more than enough parking in the parking lot. And then as far as security issues, we operated in Farmington Hills for two years with no security issues or any type of security issues arriving at all. But we do have an insured security company that we work with, like I mentioned, that will be provided at every event. But we'll also work together with law enforcement to include them when necessary. I'm really excited for this. My business grew in the course of two years to where the space that I operated from in Farmington Hills was 1,600 square feet. So, moving into a 4,200 square feet in the city of Southfield is definitely a positive move for the Lux Bar Room. So, I'm really excited. I'm also open to answering any questions or concerns from the council. And thank you for listening.
And Madam Chair, Mr. Spencer, my office contacted our counterparts in Farmington Hills, and there was no negative code violations or concerns in their database on this business. So, they got good thumbs up from the city.
Well, thank you.
Yeah, Madam President?
Yes.
Yeah, I do have a couple. If I'm still, if I'm still on the... Okay. One is, what is the kind of, what's the price range and selection of your menu? That's one thing. And secondly, did you have alcohol in Farmington Hills and do you plan to have it here?
So, as for the menu, we don't have, are you referring to a catering menu?
Yes.
We don't provide in-house catering. So, all of the food will be brought in from an approved list of catering companies that we outsource or that we recommend to clients. But we don't provide catering. And as for alcohol, we allow for alcohol to be served, just as we have in the past at the Farmington Hills location. But the bartender or mobile bartending service that's going to be used has to provide their licensing and insurance. So, there will be a bar area. All alcohol will need to be served directly from the bar area from a licensed and insured bartender.
Is it a cash bar?
No cash.
How do they, how do your clients pay for the alcohol?
Well, there's services where there are mobile bartending services where you have, if you're having maybe a private event at a venue or at your home and you want to have alcohol served, you'll pay for packages through that bartending service, which will include your alcohol. And your guests will enjoy alcohol at your event on an open bar type of level.
Okay. All right. I have no other questions.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Hoskins?
Thank you. And once again, Councilman Frazier asked a lot of the questions that I had. But one question I have is, assuming that this is approved, when will you be able to open in Southfield?
Well, pending plans after plans have been submitted to the Building Department and permits and everything issued and approved, I anticipate being open by the fall. So, realistically, I would like to be open by the end of August. There isn't a lot of work that needs to be done in this place. It's in really good condition. So, simply going in, opening it up, is going to be hopefully mid-August. And that's dependent upon my building inspections and the building department approving my plans.
All right. Well, that's the only question I had.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Mandelbaum?
No, I have no questions. I'm just glad that we're able to find another tenant in use for this development. Hopefully, we can find a couple more. But I think this would be a great addition to that area. So, I have no questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Banks?
Thank you. So, the proposed location is the area highlighted in red? Yes.
That's correct.
Okay. And I haven't been in this area in a long time. When did Kroger's leave?
Mr. Nager, can you answer that or Al? On when Kroger's left and then what was the previous space that the applicant is considering?
Yes, the Kroger's, Fred, are you on the line? Okay, I'll answer that for Councilwoman Banks. Kroger's finally left the area the beginning of the year. I would say that the timing was at the end of January. And they moved about a mile down the street on the Oak Park side where the former Kmart facility was located at. The building in question is just south of the CVS. It was formerly a rent-a-center. As Planner Cote has indicated, it's approximately 4,200 square feet. So, this would be just one empty space that would be occupied by an entrepreneurial business.
Okay. I just Googled it and it looks like a really nice, you know, concept and small and intimate for small parties. So, I'm in favor of this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Brightwell?
Yes. I definitely appreciate your interest in the city of Southfield. Just to give you an idea of the capacity, what, without getting into proprietary information or... What was your volume like in prior, your prior two years? What would you average from a participant standpoint, customer standpoint?
Anywhere between, comfortably anywhere between 60 to 80 guests, just depending on the type of event.
Okay. So, for a 12-month period of time, looking at the timeframe, we're looking at how many events perhaps during a 12-month period of time? But just what, if we're not...
Well, anywhere between about 85 and, between 85 to 90 events in a 12-month span.
Okay. Do you, do you, Carl, let's say this goes forward to completion in a positive way. Do you have any customers queued up in your sales volume? Or is it predicated on opening up a door?
Absolutely. Absolutely. I have events, I have customers who may be hosting events in prior years who are looking forward to doing business with us again. I, when I closed my previous location, I did announce that I was going to be returning with the new space, maybe a little prematurely, but I did want to keep the momentum going. Over the past two years, the Lux Bar Room has done really well, which has put me in a position to make this type of move. So, I definitely do have a community of supporters who are looking forward to me bringing the Lux Bar Room to Southfield.
Okay. And when did you close your business? You closed?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
Did you close your business in Farmington? Or you just transitioned to a location?
I closed that business in Farmington. I hosted the last event, the last weekend of March. And I refocused, re-upped my website, purchased new inventory. Obviously, I've been going through the process with the planning commission and the DDA and now here with you guys to reopen in Southfield. So, I'm no longer operating from Farmington at all.
Okay. Terry, I assume this will, during the planning process, this will go through the crime prevention process?
Yeah, they're part of the review process. And I believe we put the applicant in touch with our Crime Prevention Bureau. She's probably familiar with working with the Farmington Hills Police Department. I think she mentioned that in her discussions about security plans.
Okay. 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 Well, thanks for your experience in Southfield. I wish you success.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Councilman Cruz?
Yes. I was just curious as to if approved, when do you think or how soon do you think you could open doors?
Well, again, it would depend on how soon I can have my plans reviewed, approved through the Building Department and then moving on to a certificate of occupancy being issued. But tentatively, I plan to be open no later than mid-August.
Okay. That sounds good. All right. Well, great. I don't have any other questions. But I appreciate you wanting to come to Southfield and I hope everything works out great.
Thank you.
Yes, very good. Mr. Mayor? Okay, hearing none. Terry, did you want to have any other remarks or...
Just that, I'll turn it back over to the mayor. I just want to remind council, this actually will come back next week for your public hearing.
I'm sorry, I forgot to unmute. No, I spoke to the petitioner at the DDA meeting. I think this is a great concept. And as Councilman Cruz has said, I'm very glad that she chose Southfield. I hope the council will approve it and she'll be up and running by August. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Yep. Thank you very much for considering Southfield as well. And we look forward to the presentation on next week, on the 14th.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. All right. Our next item for presentation and discussion is the rezoning request for the site plan review for Verizon Wireless located on Northwestern Highway.
Yep. Thank you, Madam Chair. This is the last planning item. Next slide. So, we have the petitioner doing business as Verizon Wireless on the north side of Northwestern Highway between Mount Vernon and Lee Baker. Existing zoning is office service and vehicular parking. And the proposed zoning is education research office and vehicular parking. Site plan review request is demolish a portion of the existing building to construct approximately 44,000 gross square feet addition for administration plus computer and electrical equipment necessary to support mobile work. And it's that use that's triggering the need to rezone and clean up the zoning on the site to education research office. Next slide. Again, just showing aerial of the site location between Mount Vernon and Ten Mile on the east side of Northwestern Highway northbound. Next slide. And then this is a close-up view of the existing building and parking. Next slide. The future land use does support education research office. Next slide. Next slide, please. So, the proposal is to demolish the southern portion of the existing building and then to create more of an L-shaped building that extends north and east of the property. Next slide. And to get into the details, I believe we have Mr. Scott Fisher representing the applicant, who's the engineering consultant. I'd like to turn it over to Scott to talk about the various details of the plan and then both of us will be happy to answer any questions that you may have. So, with your permission, Scott, do you want to just take your cue from the slide and just talk about the overall site plan and then we'll get into the building elevations and so forth?
Certainly. Thank you, Terry. Good evening, council members. My name is Scott Fisher. I am with Midwestern Consulting and we are the civil engineer and landscape architect on this project for Verizon Wireless. Hopefully, you can still hear me as my phone just decided to die a little bit. A little bit more of a history for you on the project is, over the last decade, certainly, the data usage on wireless networks has skyrocketed as almost everybody has smartphones. And that is really the driver behind this project is basically the Verizon, they need more computing and server space in order to keep maintaining that network in the amount of quality that they need in order to maintain itself as a essential service supporting the emergency 911 system. Just to reiterate some of what Terry mentioned regarding the rezoning, it's that change to the majority of the building being for computer and electrical rooms as opposed to administration. That's where we're looking to rezone to really drive that home. And the rezoning allows us to not have to seek any variances for the project, which we see as a bonus. Regarding the site layout, what you see here is actually not the first version that we came up with. It's actually two or three versions along with the primary driver that we actually, as part of this project, are installing a electrical substation in the southeast corner, kind of in the notch between the two building segments. The design for this was intended so that we're keeping that substation basically as far away from the residential, the nearby residential properties as we can by putting basically a building between the substation and the properties. That should then help drown out any noise that the substation could create. And we see that as a benefit. A few other highlights to the site compared to what's currently out there now is we now have a service drive circling the property, which is meant mainly for maintenance, but it also then enhances emergency access for the fire department. Along that service drive, we are also providing a sidewalk, which provides an ADA-compliant route to the main building entrance on the northeast side of the building, whereas presently, the property doesn't have any such connectivity. So, another good benefit for anyone who needs to visit the location by bike or just by walking. Next slide, please. Here you can see our rendered overall site with our landscaping. We're looking to try to maintain as many of the existing trees as possible. Many of them, especially along Northwestern Highway, are nice, big, mature trees that provide a lot of screening of the property. So, we're looking to maintain that as much as we can. We are having to remove some trees, though, and all of those trees will be mitigated somewhere on-site. So, we're keeping everything within our property. We, along the northeasterly property line where the parking lot gets the closest to the residential, there is currently a six-foot-high concrete wall, which provides screening and follows the ordinance. On top of that, we are also adding a few different types of species of trees that will, within just a year, start to really block out our proposed development from those neighbors even further. And firstly, with landscaping, we have added some additional landscaping, which are the kind of darker green circles near the substation. Right now, that's basically the most we can provide due to required set that DT Energy has from their substations. We've tried to add as much screening as we can for this property. Next slide, please.
Yeah, just, this is just our basic photometric plan that we require. And you want to talk a little bit about the interior floor plan, Scott? I know you were breaking up. I'll basically jump in. As Scott had indicated, there's a reduction in office space and the need for greater data storage and processing for the 911 and mobile apps. So, a majority of this site... So a majority of this site is going to be converted to more of the computer data servers and, and memory area. Next slide.
Can you hear me better now, Terry?
A, a little bit. We're, you might want to just talk about the building addition and elevations and the height and...
Sure. So the color of the building will generally match the existing. The expansion, both the expansion and the existing building to remain will both be painted at the same time, so it's one consistent color, which matches the general, the current one, which is generally kind of a light tan grayish type color. Um, the proposed building is shorter than the portion to remain. Um, at, I believe it's approximately twenty-five feet, so it's, call it roughly two stories tall. Um, it's all just, uh, same apparent, it's all black masonry along the outside.
Next slide, please.
Uh, next slide, please.
And again, this is just, just more of the same with the, your delivery bays, and, and that's on the south elevation, which is adjacent to other commercial. Uh, yeah, I think this, this is important to show. This is looking northbound on Northwestern Highway, looking at the transformer area that's required for the power. It has a decorative security fencing around it and the mature trees that exist, as well as some additional arbivides. There are limited areas where they can be planted because of the underground utilities. Next slide. And this is typical of, of the type of transformer that would be located, although with more decorative fencing and more landscaping on-site. Next slide. And then with that, Madam Chair, we'll turn it back over to council, and Scott, if he has audio, and myself will try to answer any questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Council, we'll start with you, and Mr. Hoskins?
Thank you. I don't, I don't have any, let me sure. Yeah, I don't have any questions on this.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Mandelbaum?
I have no questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Banks?
Um, I have no questions either. Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Mr. Brightwell?
I have a question. I, I think you broke up a little bit, but you mentioned trees. Um, when you are planning, will we have evergreen and trees at this facility to camouflage this location?
Yeah, so, so the present, we try to preserve as many of the mature trees along Northwestern Highway as possible, and as Scott had indicated, there's an existing screen wall on the northeast portion of the property, but additional evergreen and deciduous trees will be planted in that small buffer area to, to screen the new addition, as well as some additional arbivides would be planted to help screen the transformer area. But that will also have decorative fencing, and there's a limit on where we could plant trees. My understanding is because of underground utilities that, that will service this property.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Was that all you had, Mr. Brightwell?
That was it, yes.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Cruz?
Madam President, I have no questions. Thank you.
Thank, thank you. And Mr. Frazier?
Yes, I do have a couple of questions. One is, is this new equipment, is it going to have any, anything to do with better coverage of Verizon? Or is it just to process data?
Uh, to the, as best I understand it, it basically processes data. So I believe what that means is you should be able, uh, I'm trying to think of a good example for you of how it works, and unfortunately, none comes to mind. So I'm afraid I'm just going to leave it at, it basically just helps the network run smoother at that point.
Okay, I would sure wish.
To Mr. Frazier, Scott, can you try to get a, a better answer before the public hearing next week?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Because I certainly wish that they have better coverage. I have Verizon service, and the coverage is less than okay, and I'm not that far. I just live off of Nine Mile and Telegraph, so. But the other thing is, do you have trash pick up there? Or don't you create enough trash that you have to have a, a trash bin?
Uh, they do, uh, create a fair amount of refuse. Um, there is a dumpster on-site that I believe is picked up once a week.
Now, is it in a place where it's screened and away from the residential that, you know, when the, uh, tops clang, when the dumpster is emptied, it doesn't disturb people?
Uh.
It's going to be, it's going to be changed or kept in the same place?
It's going to be kept in the same place and is currently located behind a block that screens it off from the neighbors.
Okay, I guess if you haven't any problem yet, you shouldn't have any problem with the, in the future, so. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mayor?
I have no questions on this. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, going back to you, Terry, this will be brought to us for, on the June fourteenth?
That's correct. Yeah, we tried to, we tried to break up the public hearings this month, so these, this item and the one prior will be on the fourteenth, and then McKinley will come back on the twenty-first.
Okay. Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, our next item is the proposed agreement for the city of Lathrow Village for the upcoming, for the continuing provision of the fire department services for a two-year period.
Thank you, Council President, and good evening. Actually, seven and eight are closely tied together. One is the dispatch services, one is fire protection. And Southfield has provided fire and dispatch services to Lathrow Village for probably about fifty years, series of shorter contracts. The last contract, we addressed a lot of operational concerns, so that this contract, there was really nothing to address other than cost increases. Both services went up two percent each year, reflective of the net salary increases of our dispatchers and other employees. Of course, fire department has not settled yet. As part of our preparations, we did meet with administration from Lathrow Village. There is definitely a positive feedback on the service we are providing. Lathrow Village has approved this contract, the city attorney has approved this contract, and if you are in agreement with it, and it remains on the consent agenda, it will be signed well in advance of the expiration of the current one, the end of this month.
Okay. Uh, council, I will defer to you and start with you, Councilman Mandelbaum.
Thank you. John, the agreement and the contract that, that we're looking at for, with Lathrow Village, for, for, I guess for both seven and eight, um, does that, is that appropriate given the increases in wages and other administrative and, um, computer needs and everything else that, that they use, or that we have to, that have been increased?
Well, it was reflective of the wage increases for certain, and a good point to note is that providing these services to Lathrow Village does not actually cost us more. For instance, in dispatch, if we were to stop servicing them, we would not decrease our costs. We would maintain the same staff and provide the same basics level of service. So it's cheaper than Lathrow Village could provide themselves, and it's less money than it really costs us to provide as well. So the thought was that the two percent was a fair reflection of the cost increase.
Okay. Um, other than that, I have, I have no questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Banks?
Um, I have no questions. Just thank you for bringing this to us before the contract expired. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Brightwell?
What you mean, I'm in favor of this contract, but, um, and I'm not sure whether you have it now, but I would like to have it, uh, at the next, what's that, the, about the fire department in Lathrow Village per year?
I'm sorry, I didn't understand that.
Well, it's the number runs, the number runs we make to Lathrow per year.
I don't have that handy, but we will have that for the next meeting, or it will be distributed prior to the next meeting.
Okay, I'm fairly in favor of this. I don't, I don't, I don't see a burden on the city, but I just want to add that, that kind of information. Thank you.
Um, right, sir. Council President, this is Councilman Mandelbaum. Um, I asked that question to the chief earlier today, and he told me it's about three hundred runs annually in Lathrow Village, mostly medical, if that helps.
Is that fine, Mr. Brightwell? That answers your question?
Well, I think John said he was going to get an answer. He, he would just, just give us the answer that officially from, from John.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mandelbaum. Councilman Cruz?
Yes, there are no real questions here. I'm just, I think it's a good partnership we've had with Lathrow Village, and I'm glad we're capturing the, some increases every year as our, as costs go up. Um, we need to make sure we're, you know, aligning with that. Uh, great job. Uh, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Frazier?
Uh, yes. I'm presuming that when it says a, a fire service, that includes EMS?
Yes, sir, it does.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. I have no other questions.
Thank you. Councilman Hoskins? Councilman Hoskins?
I must have answered his question.
You did. No, I, I'm not, sorry, I was having issues with the mute button. Um, and, and I do not have any questions.
Okay, thank you. Mayor? Okay, all right. Well, hearing no other questions, unless you have other comments. Um, Mr. Skrina, we will have this come back to our consent agenda next week, both items seven and eight.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, thank you. Moving on, we have our next item, receipt of bids for the lift station repair maintenance services.
Council President Alvin Jensen from Public Works Superintendent is on the call.
Okay.
Good evening, good evening, Madam President and honorable body. Uh, with your approval, DPW is seeking a lift station maintenance contract for our, for our sixteen lift stations. Uh, these help regulate the flow and for sanitary sewer, and without that, we would have costly backups in people's basements. We are seeking for the year a three-year contract of twenty-twenty-one, one hundred and eighty-nine hundred, uh, twenty-one, twenty-two, one hundred and one, one hundred and thirty-one thousand, five hundred and fifty-seven, uh, twenty-two, twenty-three, uh, one hundred and thirty-four thousand, three, fourteen, and sixteen cents. Uh, the stations are getting older. They were put in roughly twenty years ago. Um, and now they're big, they're becoming more costly to maintain, bringing in this company, a company called HESCO. They were the low bid of two people competing. Uh, they were the, the low bid. We are complete confidence and worked with HESCO in the past and have a complete confidence in them. Um, if, if any honorable body has any questions.
Okay, thank you. Uh, I'll turn it over to council, and I'll start with you, Councilwoman Banks?
Um, I have no questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Brightwell?
Uh, PJ, what's the life expectancy of the lift stations?
Uh, truthfully, I do not know that. Um, I would expect a minimum of fifty years. Uh, again, these were put in twenty-plus, and we're finding out that the, that the pumps need a little more maintenance. They need to be pulled and refurbished, refurbished. Um, and general maintenance is what this is really about in preventing, uh, emergencies coming up, which we have had a couple here in the past, past thirty days, forty-five days.
Okay. Uh, and I, I just, you know, obviously, this is coming from a layman. Uh, do we have any lift stations that are, uh, when I deal with life expectancy, do we have anything that look like it's going to fail anytime soon?
Oh, no, absolutely not. Um, we, we're very good at maintaining the, the lift stations and, and get the, getting them, um, up to par, although some things do come up and surprise us, as, as emergencies do. Um, the stations are in very good health. They're, uh, there's no, um, no degradation to the point of any kind of replacement anytime soon.
Okay, this is normal repair and maintenance, you're telling me?
Yes, yes. I would like to try and keep all of this for standard maintenance and repair in, um, so that we can keep the stations going and moving along.
Okay, all right, all right. I'm good. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Councilman Cruz?
That sounds like a good idea to do, so no problem. I'm in support.
Thank you. Councilman Frazier?
Uh, I have no questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Hoskins?
I have no questions for me. Thank you.
Thank you. And Councilman Mandelbaum?
No questions for me. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Well, this will be put on the consent agenda for next week, June fourteenth, unless there's any other questions or comments. Um, all right. Thank you very much. Our next item is the door replacement project.
Good evening, Madam President, Mr. Proton, Councilman Mayor. Uh, this is Terry Fields, Parks and Recreation Director. Uh, we have worked with the purchasing department, who opened up bids for the removal and the replacement of the doors located over at the sports arena and in the underground parking garage area. Uh, the contractor will be responsible for site demolition, furnishing and installing the new doors at each location and, and the preparation of the doors to accept a, a new power supply. Uh, we did receive two bids, one, uh, which was deemed responsive. Um, that is Stanley Access Technologies. Uh, the underground parking, uh, total is fourteen thousand, two hundred and thirty, and the sports arena total is twenty-two thousand, two hundred and ninety, for a total of thirty-six thousand, five hundred and twenty dollars. And it, we are asking this honorable body to, uh, grant us the door replacement through Stanley Access Technologies for that total. Um, and I would be, um, open to answering any questions you might have.
Okay, great. Thank you. Uh, council, and I'll start with you, Councilman Brightwell. Any questions from Ms. Fields?
No questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Cruz?
No, no questions as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Frazier?
I do have some questions. I don't know how many doors are going to be replaced. Uh, and especially in the underground parking, are all the doors that are, like, go up to the, up to the pavilion going to be replaced, or just the ones into the, the area where the kids are?
The, the lower, the lower area, where is it, where you come in at the parking garage? And actually, it'll be the automatic doors, and there will be one side door that will be replaced.
The automatic, the, the doors where I come into the parking garage?
Correct.
Are you talking about where the police go in, or where I come in?
Where, where you come in in the parking garage? So if you come in and park, um, and closest to the pavilion area, those automatic doors there? Where, where you come in in the parking garage? So if you come in and park, um, and closest to the pavilion area, those automatic doors there.
Oh, the one that slides back and forth?
Yes.
Oh, oh, okay, I thought you were.
Yes, and we're, and we're getting the same thing at the sports arena. Um, the reason we're doing that is we just, we've had so many uh, repairs to those doors, and we've got large hockey bags and large equipment coming in and out of those doors, so, um, we took a look at, at both, um, scenarios, uh, Councilman Frazier, and, and really, this is the smartest route for us to go, is those automatic sliding doors.
Okay, uh, that's helps, helpful with, uh, ADA also.
Absolutely.
Yeah, okay, uh, when you said where I come into parking garage, I was gonna say, I must have been running through an invisible door.
No, I'm sorry. I, I didn't give you the right picture there, did I?
Okay, all right, thank you. I have no other questions.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Councilman Hoskins?
Uh, thank you. My question was also which, which doors we're gonna be replacing in the underground parking, so, um, with that, I don't have any more questions.
Okay, great, thank you. Councilman Mandelbaum?
Uh, no, um, I'm glad that, uh, Mr. Frazier asked the question, 'cause I was also thinking what doors are in the garage, but I'm glad he asked that question, so, thank you.
Mm-hmm. And Councilwoman Banks?
Um, I have no questions, thank you.
Thank you. So this item two will be, uh, on the consent agenda next week, uh, June fourteenth. Unless someone else has another question, we will move on to the next item.
Thank you.
Okay. Our next item is the escalator removal project in the public safety building or the police, uh, department.
Thank you, Council President, good evening. As you are aware, the escalator in the police department public safety building has not worked for years. We have used it as an informally as stairway, but a recent change in elevator inspectors brought to light that that's not appropriate. So we did have the option of either repairing or replacing. To get an assessment of the escalators was over twenty thousand dollars. For comparison purposes, to repair the court escalators, which are not in as bad condition, the cost was two hundred thousand, a little over two hundred thousand. So the bids to replace the stairs or the escalators with stairs are actually very reasonable in comparison to low bidder. Allied Building Services is a firm we have worked with before in the past. We are comfortable with them. We do know it will take them a little bit longer to complete the job, but for about a hundred thousand dollars in reduced cost, we feel it is worthwhile. This will generate savings, both for electricity and for maintenance. Escalators are more expensive to maintain than elevators. And since the public is not accessible to the second floor generally now in the police department, the load for the stairs does not really justify an escalator. In addition, just as an example, the Warren Police Department has the exact same building we do, and they did replace their escalator with stairs some time ago. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'll turn over to, uh, our council, and I'll start with you, Councilman Cruz.
That sounds like a, uh, like a good plan to me. I know I've been there a million times. Just never made much sense to me to not be able to access it or utilize it, so I think just removing and putting some stairs in, sounds like a good plan. Thanks, John, for researching that and bringing that to us.
Thank you. Uh, Councilman Frazier?
When you're taking the, the, uh, old escalator out and putting in stairs, uh, how do people get up to the second floor?
There are other staircases in the building at the corners, and the elevator is still there, although ironically, the main elevator is down now, so that is an issue. That is another emergency repair, unfortunately. But there are other stairs.
Okay, that, because the question I was gonna ask is, uh, you should have two escape routes, uh, and one of them not being an elevator. Um, also, when the bids were taken, the numbers, I can't make those numbers add up. When, you know, when they changed, when they changed the numbers, did it change the low bid?
The data I received from purchasing, which handled the bids, included ten percent for engineering inspection and contingencies, but it did not change the bids in relation to each other.
Okay, 'cause when I add those numbers up, I'm trying to interpret what was in the, in the write-up and, um, I can't, I can't make those numbers come, I can make them come out within a, you know, a couple thousand dollars, but they didn't seem to add up for me. Uh, and I'm not gonna sit here and say that I'm an expert in math either, so could be my problem, so. But as far as the work, the work is concerned, I have no problem, I have no problem with that. I, uh, I think it's the right thing to do.
Okay.
I, other than that, I don't have any other questions.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, Mr. Frazier, would you like for, um, John to contact you and go over the numbers, or are you comfortable?
Yeah, that would be helpful. I need to talk with him anyhow, so.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
John, would you be able to contact Mr. Frazier?
Of course, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, next, uh, Mr. Hoskins?
Uh, thank you. Uh, I, I'm fine, I'm certainly fine with this, um, and I appreciate the work that, that John put in, into this. But, um, this one, a- actually, the, uh, the previous item too on the agenda, it, it makes me think, you know, we, um, I think it was, uh, OHM, you know, came in and looked at, you know, what we could do with the, with the campus, with the buildings on the campus, and you know, we've been looking at a number of, uh, upgrades, um, with the, the, the council chambers, and I was curious, where are we on those? Um, are we doing, uh, is there anything new or to report on that?
Councilperson Hoskins, I think your point is well taken. In effect, we are making that decision without making that decision, and this remains to be an item to be discussed and decided upon by council, as I understand it.
Okay. All right, that is, that's the only question I had.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, Mr. Mandelbaum?
I have no questions, thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Banks?
Um, I have no questions, thank you.
Thank you. And Councilman Brightwell?
Um, I'm, I was, uh, when I shared the Veterans Commission, I would, we would use second floor for our library of Congress, uh, interviews with veterans, and, and I was over there enough to realize that escalator was down more than it was up. So, but John, just from a finance standpoint, you know, a nerd question, do you get any salvage value, uh, for the, um, good, good model escalator?
That is an excellent question, Councilman. We actually investigated that, and the determination was because of the twenty-four hour nature of the escalators when they were running, they're much more worn out than the court escalators, and the items that we need to replace are not the items that would still be serviceable from our escalator, from the PD escalators, I mean. But that absolutely is a good question. That was something that we did investigate, because it seemed like an opportunity. Unfortunately, it was just something that didn't pan out.
Okay, so the salvageable, that's, that's what you're telling me?
Correct, sir.
Okay, good, no, thank you. I'm, I'm pleased.
Okay, thank you. Um, and that's, uh, all from the council, so, uh, Mayor, did you have any questions or comments?
Uh, no, this is something we need to do.
Okay, thank you. All right, John, we can move this forward to the, uh, consent agenda as well for next week?
Thank you, ma'am.
All righty. Our, uh, next item for tonight, uh, council will, will be the explanation of, uh, cost changes in authorized traffic services truck purchase, and they're asking for, they're saying that this will be an immediate need to act, and they're asking for Rule Ten on this, and, uh, take it away. We're ready to listen.
Thank you again, Council President. As you are aware, you did approve this purchase of a replacement sign truck at the May twenty-fourth meeting. Unfortunately, subsequent to that, it was discovered that the truck that was quoted was a standard cab as opposed to an extended cab, which was needed for the outfitting, and the cost difference was about three thousand dollars. So Kevin Clark, our director of the motor pool, went into negotiation mode, and we were able to lower the cost of the truck itself a little bit, not that much, because frankly, there's not a lot of profit in a rail truck that's put under competitive bids, but we were able to actually save additional funds from the upfit, who pretty much was presented with, we need to bring this down, or we will not be able to proceed with the sale. And when it was all done, we are actually going to pay less for the truck than council approved. However, since the quote for the base truck was included in the resolution, we thought it was appropriate to bring this back to council and explain what happened and ask for approval again, although as indicated, the new truck with the extended cab will cost about, I think it was about eight hundred and fifty dollars less than the previous truck that was quoted. And the reason why we are asking for a rule ten is because one of our bargaining chips in the negotiations was that we can keep this sale moving at the same pace if we can get the appropriate pricing. Basically, it's the same truck, a little better truck for less money.
Okay. Uh, council, I'll turn over to you for more questions, if you have any. Um, starting with you, Councilman Frazier?
Believe it or not, I find an immediate need to act and ask for a rule ten.
Okay.
I support that.
Okay, um.
I have no discussion. I have no discussion.
Okay, thank you. Um, before, now I'm.
No, we have the, we have a motion on the table. We have the motion on the table. We can discuss it, and then we can vote on it.
Okay, so let's go ahead and have the discussion, and I, I just want to give everybody on council an opportunity, that's all, to discuss it if they have to or want to. We have a, a motion on the, it's been moved by Councilman Frazier, supported by Councilman Cruz, for an immediate need to act for Rule Ten. We can vote on that.
Roll call?
Am I correct?
Yeah.
Am I correct on that? We can vote on the Rule Ten and then discuss the item, and then we can vote on it?
Right.
Okay. So, so there's, there's a motion on the floor for Rule Ten. It's been moved by Councilman Frazier and supported by Councilman Cruz for an immediate need to act. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Brightwell?
Yes.
Hoskins?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Frazier?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
And Banks?
Yes.
And now for discussion of the item. I'll continue on with, uh, Councilman Hoskins?
Uh, I have no, I have no questions on this.
Okay, Councilman Mandelbaum?
I have no questions.
Yeah, Councilwoman Banks?
The item's already been approved, but I'm not sure if one week would have made it any difference. It seems like it's really hard to get, um, any type of vehicle right now because of the computer chips, so that's all.
Okay, and Councilman Brightwell?
Um, I want to give the administration full disclosure, although this was, um, a lower price. And I just like the, uh, culture that we have, bringing this to camp, because I've, I've been on council long enough, I realize and aware of things that did not happen, that we were future approved, and it came back to be embarrassing. But I would like, I appreciate the administration coming forward with this full disclosure. John, or what, what, uh, the necessary act, I definitely appreciate it, and I this is a good thing, um, so, and obviously saving eight hundred and thirty dollars, uh, for, uh, two hundred thirty-six thousand dollar truck is a good thing also. But the main point I'm making now is that, uh, please, please keep this, uh, full disclosure going forward.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Councilman Cruz?
This is an open and shut case, uh, so no question.
Okay, thank you. All right, council, now I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, um, we approve item twelve.
Thank you.
Support.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilman Brightwell, supported by Councilman Frazier for the approval of the, uh, truck purchase price change or cost change. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Hoskins?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Frazier?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Banks?
Yes.
And Brightwell?
Yes.
Thank you, Council President, and if I could just comment that full credit for the negotiating job on this goes to Kevin Clark for Motor Pool. When he came back with a better truck for less money, I was certainly impressed. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, now we're under our communication portion. And again, um, just ask that everyone would please, uh, adhere to our council rules and that of the charter to be respectful and do not make any, um, personal or impor- impertinent attacks on any officer, employee, or city council member or other elected officials that is unrelated to the matter in which the officer or the employee or city council member or elected official performs his or her duty. Uh, no person shall use any abusive or threatening language toward any individual when addressing the city council. If these are not adhered to your mic, will be silent. Uh, with that, I'd like to open up the communications. If there's anyone on the line that would care to speak tonight, please raise your hand, and the clerk will recognize you. Do we have anyone on the line, Madam Clerk?
Madam Clerk, we have caller number thirteen that's unmuted. They just raised their hand.
Hi, my name is my address is one eight six one one Capitol Drive, and I'm calling in to reference number four, item number four, the rezoning of McKinney School for rugs, and I'm definitely against that. Um, I listened to all the comments of all what was said and watched the slides, but the problem is, this is all speculative. And this traffic is gonna be a problem, and we know it. And it's a lot of issues that was not addressed. They did meet with us two years ago, and then when COVID happened, we did not get our next meeting because we, this is not what we want. This is not conducive with our property lines. It's just, um, there's no subdivision in the city of Southfield that has condos inside their subdivision. And people come down Lee Baker all the time to cut through because they, it's, it's all the traffic on Southfield. What they'll do is come at the exit at Evergreen, and they'll turn left on Lee Baker and cut through our subdivision to get to over there, and it happens all the time. We know that, and with these eighty-plus cars, it's gonna be much worse. It's just gonna be like a main freeway up through here. And that's the problem for us. We pay our taxes, we love our homes. Our homes are unique over here. It's just a problem for us. Our community is lazy, it's very, very quiet, it's very subdued. We don't have any problems. I know one of the city planning commission said that we were old and we were dying out, which was the harshest thing that I've ever heard coming from someone on the planning committee, but that But that being, with even that being said, we value our property and we value our homes and we value the quality of our life and we don't want it changed. Now, if they can put, turn this into a cul-de-sac, you'll get a whole different response from our community. But as long as it's open, the people can rip and run through here, 25 miles an hour means nothing. That means nothing if, if there's, this is not a cul-de-sac. The only thing we could do to assist with maintaining a relationship with this project and with the city, turn it into a cul-de-sac, block our community off. Give it a one-way in and a one-way out as many of these other sub, uh, subdivisions within some, the other subdivisions that go directly out into a main freeway or, or the highway. It's not set up like this. Now, if you set it up like that, you won't have a problem with me. But the way it's set up now, that's not gonna work for us. It's just not gonna work out at all.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, we have someone else?
Yes, caller number 14.
Hello?
Hello?
Good evening. My name is Gerard Mullin. Post office box 155, Southfield, Michigan, 48037. Tonight, I wish, Madam President, to talk about Section 11.18. 11.18 in the Southfield City Charter. 11.18 is entitled Amendments, which describes how this council may amend the charter in one easy step. Sad to say, this one easy step conflicts with the not-so-easy mandatory two-step Michigan state law known as Section 21 in the Michigan Home Rule Act of 1909. Thus making Section 11.18 null and void. Section 11.18 became null and void way back in 1958 when the original authors of the Southfield City Charter forgot to include the second step in the state of Michigan's two-step procedure. And these two steps are, step number one. Council must first of all pass a proposed charter amendment. And then step number two, the voters must pass by ballot election council's proposed charter amendment. Sadly, Section 11.18 lacks step number two, the ballot election, the missing step. After 63 years, it is about time that you folks here on this city council wake up and do yourselves a felicitous favor and fix Section 11.18 along with the many other flawed sections by creating a charter commission under the authority of Section 18 of the Home Rule Act. If not now, then when? If the city of Detroit can mandate every 20 years a ballot initiative for a proposed charter commission, then the Southfield City Council should be able to do the same. If not you, then who? Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Council.
Good evening.
Um, okay, so, uh, this is Pamela Gerald, P.O. Box 155, Southfield, Michigan, 48037-0155. My telephone number to all the residents that continue to call me, it's still the same, 248-346-0439. At the last council meeting, our esteemed mayor of the city of Southfield was making a presentation and he was asked a question that I thought was just so unopportune at the time that he was making his presentation and he was asked about diversity. What was the mayor doing about diversity and inclusion on this particular issue? I don't have to tell you what he was saying. You can go back and listen to the meeting for yourself. So I'm going to ask that same council person, and you know who you are. When the gentleman was giving the presentation about the court and the project on Nine Mile, I noticed you did not ask anything about inclusion, diversity, and equity. Nor did you ask Lawrence Tech when they were giving their presentation anything about inclusion, diversity, and equity. So I'm going to say to that councilman, and you know who you are, do not use the people's business and this council meeting to try to campaign against anybody. All we want you to do is talk about the people's business and be fair and realize that the taxpayers are at the top of the organizational chart. And if you can't do that, maybe you should not participate in these council meetings. And Madam Chair, you have got to be a little bit more involved and listen to what's being said. And you have allowed me to be cut off at the most unopportune times with people not having a clear understanding as to what you can say or not say in freedom of speech and what you can and cannot say in communications versus a public hearing where what you talk about has to be germane to the subject that's being discussed. So I'm gonna ask you, with your great set of listening skills, to listen to what some of your colleagues are saying and stop this campaigning during the people's business while they're occupying what would normally be seats up at the lectern or at the dais? Let's stop that. We only want to hear about the city's business and the people's business. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam President, right now we don't have anyone else. Oh, we do. One more person. Just raise your hand.
Okay.
Caller number 16?
Madam President?
Yes, hi.
Hi, how are you? My, my name is Louis Jefferson. I stay at 18440 George Washington right at Continental. And I'm calling referring about the, uh, school project that the mayor is trying to push through. Uh, I don't think anyone in this Washington Heights, uh, wants to have a zone rechange. I know I don't. As well as no one wants to have, um, what is it, um? We have condominiums.
Condos.
Condos and, um.
Duplexes.
Duplexes. No one wants a duplex. That's only gonna bring a bunch of trouble. And as far as the traffic goes, it's gonna be beaucoup traffic coming through here and around this corner. Uh, and the folks that's building this here, uh, wants to build this, they have no idea of what's gonna happen to George Washington Heights. So I'm asking you, uh, Madam President, please allow us to live the way we've been living. Not let them change the zone and allow us to, uh, continue to, uh, live in a quiet neighborhood. Thank you.
And this is, uh, his, this is the wife. This is Gwen Jefferson.
Excuse me, Ms. Jefferson, could, could you, let me start over, please, one second.
Uh-huh, sure.
Okay, go right ahead.
Okay, and I'm a retiree from, uh, well, it's AT&amp;T now. Uh, and the reason that we first moved in this area was because I worked at the Sharples Building on Southfield Road. I worked at the Northwest Office Center that's now AT&amp;T at, right at the end of the freeway. And we used to walk through this neighborhood for exercise. And it was a nice neighborhood. And when, when we were in the process of moving, we chose to move here. And the home that we're at, if that school is at 1-18330, we're 18440. So we're right across the street from it. And as far as that traffic study, it's not valid because the person that did, did the traffic study, they don't live here. We live here. We know the traffic that cuts through from, uh, probably AT&amp;T. It could be the school. It's people that, local people in the neighborhood that comes through here, yes. But it's also people that are out of the neighborhood that comes through here. And there's no 25 miles an hour, uh, traffic coming in and out of here. So if we're gonna put that many cars right across the street, what do you think it's gonna be then when it's already not valid as far as the 25 miles an hour and as far as the people that should be coming through here? So like I said, we're right on that corner. And if they want a, a real valid traffic study, they should ask us 'cause we're the ones that live here. We see it. They're doing the study, which is not, not a true study. And trash, and I don't know how many times they, in the wintertime, they come through here, coming around that corner too fast. They've knocked down the yield signs. They've knocked down, what do you call them, those big 2x4, uh, wooden, uh.
Reflectors.
Reflector. They knocked those down. They, uh, dig up our grass when they go down in the ditch and get stuck. And then in the spring, we have to repair. So no, I don't wanna see that there. I'm all for change, but not that kind of change. How come they can't put some, uh, single-family homes over there? I, I don't understand. And that, that's all I have to say for right now.
Thank you, Ms. Jefferson.
And.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else, Madam Clerk?
Yes, caller number 25.
Yes, hello?
Hello?
Yes, is, uh, the number 25?
Yes.
Okay. Hi, my name is Bruce Morris. I live at 18581 Capital Drive. I'm calling to ask that the council not approve the request to rezone the McKinley School area. Asking that you guys represent the wishes of the citizens of Washington Heights. More than the majority of the citizens over here are not in favor of this rezoning request. We called in and we probably had maybe 30, 40, maybe up to even 50 people called at the planning commission voicing our concerns against this. But the planning commission went ahead and approved the change. So we're asking you all to not approve it. Respect our wishes of, of our residents. Um, some of you are more than aware of the unscrupulous nature surrounding McKinley School, surrounding the purchase of the school, the ownership of the school. We've asked in the past that we meet with the mayor and cover his involvement in this nonprofit. We had a meeting before the pandemic, but nothing came out of it except that this was kind of tabled for a while ago. We called in a month or so ago, asked the planning commission to stop. They went ahead and approved it. Then a week later, we get a notice saying there's an open house to come and see the school. Some of us went down to visit the school. We didn't get a chance to. It wasn't a real meeting. It was more of a fact of checking off a box to, so that they could tell you all that they met with the residents, which did not happen. It was an open house. People got a chance to walk in, look at the school. Most of us that attended still were not convinced of the idea that changing the rezon and putting in condos and duplexes would increase the value of our homes. It's already zoned for single-family. If you want to increase the value of the homes in this area, put nicer homes in that area than what's already here. None of us will be convinced that condos will increase our value. So we're asking you all, please, to respect our wishes and disapprove the rezoning request. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, caller number 27?
Hi, my name is John Oden. Um, hold on one second. I gotta take this off. Okay. Um, I, um, live at 18611 Capital Drive. Um, I live right down the street and, um, I've, I've spoke at your council meeting about this project. Um, we, you know, um, I, um, put a lot of money in my house and I, um, do a lot of work on it constantly. And what I'm trying, asking you to do is respect the, the, um, the subdivision, um, concern. It is, it is, um, for some reason, they wanna put apartments in our subdivision. Now, why all condos? Why? You guys figure that out. You need to figure it out. Because we primarily have figured it out and we want you guys to protect our interests. You need to protect our interests. You know, I, I, um, I have a lot of faith in people. Um, I work with people and helping them, um, become, um, better citizens. And you guys need to stand up for our interests. You guys know this is wrong, what, what's going on down here. They shouldn't have, no subdivision has a apartment in them. I drove around to several and I didn't see any. And the ones that do have apartments, they go out to the main street. They go out to Southfield, um, you know, Evergreen. They go, they, they, they don't go into the subdivision. We just wanna keep our subdivision. And I'm not, I look, look, I do pay taxes every year. You don't have trouble out of me or anything. I keep, I'm a quiet neighbor and I pick up the paper when it's in the street. I just want you guys to help us. Stand up for us. Because we don't, I, you know, you know what started me to come out here is this project. I didn't say, I didn't even hardly listen to you guys. But when this project came up, all hell started for me because I'm getting older and I can't watch people, people. We walk through here and we don't have no, I keep my garage door open. Nothing, all night. Nothing was taken. I'm just saying, you guys need to stand up for us and check.
Um, you're, you're telling. Thank you, Mr. Oden.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other callers?
Madam President, that will conclude, uh, the public comment this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Council, do you have anything for the order of the business tonight? All right, uh, hearing none. I declare this evening. Yes?
I, I do want to, um, just comment that, um, next week is June 10. And, uh, we will be starting activities, uh, starting next Monday. And I'll be sending out a, um, from the committee that includes, um, the Historical Society, Parks and Rec, the library, and the vocal chapter of AKA. Uh, the, um, roster of events, uh, something's happening every day next week. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments?
Uh, Madam President, just a reminder, we do have our special budget, uh, hearing meeting, uh, that will be next week, uh, June the 14th. That will start at 5:00. uh, June the fourteenth, that will start at five thirty P M. Uh, then we'll have our regular meeting that starts at six P M. Just a reminder, we do just have the same code, uh, for individuals to call in and council to log in for that June fourteenth meeting, uh, which we'll be having our public hearing for our budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for that reminder as well. Anything else, anyone? All right, hearing none. I will now declare this meeting adjourned. Have a good evening, everyone, and enjoy the rest of your week.